Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Our agenda starts with some amazing recognitions and acknowledgements, so I will recognize Dr. Abdul Hady.
All right, I will call, I'll start with Principal Dr. Breon Parker.
Good evening. All right, this is the fun stuff. So, I would like to call up Ms. Leila Lee. So tonight, we get the pleasure of presenting the Connecticut Association of Superintendent's Award, that is also known as CAPS. And Leila is a senior here at Windsor High School and has been in the Windsor Public School System her entire educational career. Through all of her years at Windsor High, she has been heavily involved in both athletics and academics, where she can be seen supporting others. As a captain of the girls volleyball team at Windsor High School, she is also, she is always supporting her underclassmen, whether that be emotionally, when games get tough, or athletically by using her skills to guide her teammates. This past season, she has been a key defensive player in charge of the team's success, leading the girls volleyball team to a record of sixteen and seven and hosting a home playoff game. All that while recording milestone five-hundred-plus digs. Not only does Leila play volleyball, she is also a manager for the Windsor High School Boys Volleyball Team, where she can be seen helping the boys' players in refining their gameplay on the court and their mentality off the court, as well as doing all the paperwork and managerial duties that go along with that. In addition to being involved in Windsor volleyball programs, she plays volleyball in the winter and spring and coaches younger children, helping them grow in the volleyball community, sharing her love of volleyball. Beyond athletics, Leila is a student that challenges herself academically with multiple rigorous advanced placement and early college experience courses throughout her high school career. Leila is a longstanding orchestra member of twelve years, a member of the National Honor Society, and a member of ROKAPA Social Studies Honor Society. In her time at Windsor High School, Leila has been committed to the growth and success of herself and other students on the court and in the classroom. Leila has logged over three-hundred-and-eighteen community service hours and counting. To put that in perspective, we asked for twenty to go along with the graduation requirement, so she's knocking that out of the park. As she will continue, as she plans to major in nursing, where she can continue to create a positive impact on people around her. Dr. Hady and members of the board, I present to you Leila Lee, this year's Windsor High School CAPS Community Service Award recipient. All right, next up, we have the CAPS Leadership Award. That is for Faza Enusa, another talented Windsor High School senior. Faza is known for her work ethic, commitment, and commitment which is visible through her contributions to Windsor High School and the Windsor community. Faza is a pillar of the class of 2026, as she has played a vital role in the organization and execution of many school events such as the prom and spirit weeks. Her leadership style is highlighted by innovation, empathy, and emphasis on collaboration, always looking to include the voice and skills of her peers. Though she would never admit to being competitive, nor that public speaking is one of her strong suits, she will admit that her role as captain of the Windsor High School debate team is one she is most proud of. From helping recruit members and planning fundraisers, to taking hour-long bus rides on weekends to statewide debates, her love for debate is rooted deeply in the research preparation and overall pursuit of knowledge. Faza has a gift of transferring these qualities to the classroom as a peer tutor in her humanities subject area. Faza's leadership also ventures into creative outlets, such as last week, she was a proud costumes designer, a manager, excuse me, of the Windsor High School play, Just Another High School Play. From murder to melodramas to mimes, everything could be found in this play either readily available or figured out on the fly. Faza and her crew organized everything from quick changes to making toga out of bed sheets. She took on and executed this tall order with confidence in a clipboard. Armed with confidence and the same clipboard, Faza can tackle any task. Faza is mindful of her voice and actions, especially to those of today's youth. As her role as editor-in-chief of The Windsor Wire, that's the school's newspaper, she works diligently to highlight peers through a mix of articles, poems, and art. Faza also takes her leadership to unusual terrains as a high school figure skater. She's up at four AM to practice before school and returns to the rink after school to coach. Working as a coach the past year has been one of the most rewarding experiences as she has been able to encourage children that were once afraid to step on the ice to now mastering speed skating. She approaches every task and challenge with an open mind and optimistic view, always wanting to involve others, making her a great candidate for this honor. I expect that we have not heard the last of this leader in the years to come. Dr. Hady and members of the board, I present to you Faza Enusa, this year's Windsor High School CAPS Leadership Award recipient. Only ten more to go. So, last but not least, Grace Lynn LaCarce? Grace Lynn is a senior at Windsor High School, where she is passionate about everything she does, both in the classroom and beyond. She enjoys challenging herself with numerous advanced placement and early college experience classes, as she has been immersed in these types of academic rigor since her sophomore year. Grace Lynn has achieved high honors every quarter throughout her entire high school career. With these academic achievements, she has received the Yale Book Award and the J. Lim Science Award. She is also a member of the ROKAPA Honor Society, that's the Social Studies Honor Society, as well as the National Honor Society, and the La Sociedad Honoraria Hispanica Award.
Good job.
Yeah. Grace Lynn enjoys serving and learning within these academic communities. Beyond academics, Grace Lynn is involved in sports, as she is the co-captain of the high school's cross-country team, where she enjoys encouraging her teammates and working up a sweat in practice and running her heart out at meets. Her passion for the sport has paid off. She's been a member of the Connecticut All-Conference Team and runs in the state open meet multiple times, as well as received the Warrior Award as the Most Improved Award for her efforts. She is also an enthusiastic member of the Varsity Track and Field Team, where she is one of the school's two mile runners. Grace Lynn also loves serving the community. She works with elementary school-aged children at her church and with middle school students at her local youth group. She has also been on multiple mission trips throughout her high school career, both in-state and abroad. She likes meeting new people and hopes that her life makes a difference for others. When she's not in school, on the track, or at church, Grace Lynn can be found making art or reading a good book or spending quality time with her cat, who likes to bite her with love. After high school, Grace Lynn plans to further her academic journey by pursuing environmental science and art in college. My guess is, we will hear her name many more times before the end of the school year and beyond. Dr. Hady, members of the board, I present to you Grace Lynn LaCarce. This is Windsor High School CAP Academic Award.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I would now like to call Principal Leanna Jorgensen, our middle school principal.
Good evening, everyone, Madam President, the board. And so it's with great honor tonight that I get to present to you three outstanding middle school students. First, we have Ms. Keshanique Stewart. This year's recipient of the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent Leadership Award goes to Keshanique Stewart. This honor presented to students who demonstrate outstanding leadership in their school community. This award is a testament to Keshanique's dedication, hard work, and ability to inspire those around her. Keshanique is an outstanding student who is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. In addition to that, she has earned high honors and honors during her entire time at Sage Park Middle School. Her teachers and peers alike agree that she is not only a top student, but also a role model who leads by example every day. Ms. Gregory, Keshanique's ELA teacher, has witnessed her growth as a student and a leader firsthand. She states that Keshanique has been a positive presence in class since day one. She offers a helping hand to classmates while also contributing insightfully to classroom discussions. She's a quiet leader whose example is a model for her peers. Ms. Gregory noted that Keshanique's classroom presence helps to elevate everyone's learning experience. Whether it's offering to help a classmate leading a book discussion with maturity beyond her years, Keshanique has proven to be an influential voice among her peers. Her ability to communicate clearly and think critically has made her a standout student in her English language arts. Her math teacher, Ms. Nine, praised Keshanique's perseverance and confidence when approaching complex problems. Keshanique consistently pushes herself to go beyond the basic. Ms. Nine said she welcomes challenging work and takes pride in stretching her thinking. It's amazing to see how much she's grown by embracing opportunities to think deeper. Her leadership is evident in how she balances personal academic achievement with a willingness to support others. Ms. Nine also emphasized that Keshanique's success in math stems not just from her natural ability, but from her determination to keep growing and learning every day. Beyond the classroom, Keshanique has also shown tremendous leadership in school activities and community service projects. Whether helping to organize school-wide events or volunteering after school, she consistently shows up with a positive attitude and a commitment to making things better. Her ability to collaborate, to listen, and to motivate others has made her a valuable leader in every space she enters. Major Spears from the JROTC shared, "Keshanique has earned many hours of community service this quarter and has been a positive presence in her class so far. She's always willing to lead by taking on new tasks or helping out." The CAPS Award for Leadership is not just a recognition of hard work and passion, it is a celebration of character, influence, and service. Keshanique exemplifies these qualities every day, earning the respect and admiration of her teachers, her classmates, and her school community. Her journey serves as a reminder that leadership comes in many forms. And through her actions, Keshanique is already shaping a brighter future for herself and others. Madam President and the board, I present to you our leader, Keshanique Stewart.
All right, may I have our next student, Ariel Hutchinson?
This year's recipient of the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent Community Service Award goes to Ariel Hutchinson. So Ariel is a true embodiment of service, leadership, and dedication. From an early age, she has consistently demonstrated a genuine desire to help others and make a difference in her school and community. At Clover Elementary School, she was an active member of the Kiwanis Kids Club, where she participated in service projects such as cleaning up the local neighborhood and trash pickup. This early experience ignited her passion for community service and set the foundation for her for continued involvement. Throughout her years at Sage Park Middle School, just the last two, Ariel has continued to lead by example. She is the first eighth grader to be named Cadet of the Month in JROTC, an honor typically awarded to high school students. She was inducted into the National Junior Society all the while managing a rigorous academic course load, participating in sports across country, and volunteering at events such as the most recent Walk-a-thon. Ariel also serves as a student guide for prospective students at Sage Park, helping them feel welcome and comfortable as they learn about their future school. In addition, Ariel has proudly represented JROTC in the BE Parade in September and has taken part in community food packaging initiatives to support families in need. She's already planning to participate in another food packaging event this November to help ensure that the members of our community have their essential resources. Looking ahead, Ariel also has plans to volunteer at Riverside, where she plans to support and spend time with elderly residents. Ariel has been a member of our morning announcement crew for the past two years. Her advisor, Ms. Rikus, speaks highly of her character and contributions. Ms. Rikus shared, "I've had the pleasure of working with Ariel for some time now as a part of the student news team. Ariel is exceptional and a driven student who is actively involved in her community. She's constantly looked for ways to contribute through her work with JROTC and now through National Junior Society." Her homeroom teacher, Ms. Renner, added that Ariel is a role model who always puts others before herself, whether it's helping classmates stepping up to volunteer or serving as a positive influence. She helps her peers when they are stuck and works equally well independently. She seeks knowledge when she doesn't know things and is open to others' mindset. She believes in always striving to do more for her community, and her actions reflect an unwavering commitment. Ariel aspires to pursue a career either in human resources or as an actress, with the goal of showing the world that anything is possible when you put your mind to it. She is passionate about trying new things and seeks out opportunities that allow her to grow, to learn, and to gain meaningful experiences. Madam President and the board, I present to you Ariel Hutchinson, our Community Service Award winner.
Last but not least, Audrey King.
This year's recipient of the Connecticut Association Public Schools Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award goes to Audrey King. For Audrey, academic excellence means setting meaningful goals and reaching them through determination, perseverance, and hard work. When entering middle school, Audrey's first goal was to earn high honors every year. During her time at Sage Park Middle School, she has maintained an impressive ninety-eight-point-three grade point average. She has achieved and exceeded her goal by earning high honors in every quarter of both sixth and seventh grade and just most recently, first quarter. As a result of her academic success, she is now a member of the National Junior Honor Society. Audrey has received numerous academic awards, including Outstanding Achievement Award in every class during her sixth grade year, Academic Excellence in all of her core classes during her seventh grade year. She's also been recognized as Reader of the Month, Artist of the Month, and also Historian of the Month. Audrey's second goal entering middle school was to excel in all of her extracurricular activities while maintaining high grades. And so through her time at Sage Park, she has successfully balanced her academics with a variety of outside activities, including swimming competitively for the Windsor Water Rats, performing with the New England Ballet Theater, and competing with the Suffield Gymnastics Academy Team. Audrey has earned the Bronze Award in Girl Scouts and plans to earn the Silver Award before entering high school, which is a long year ahead of her. She's also participated in several after-school clusters such as Lego Masters, Origami, Chess Clubs, Strategic Games, Mosaic Art, and PALS. Participation in these activities has helped her develop focus, time management skills, and confidence in her strengths. In addition to her extracurricular involvement, Audrey continues to challenge herself academically by taking Algebra I and French I with our both high school-level courses at the middle school. Ms. Taylor Love, Ashley's French teacher, shared, "I've had Audrey for all three years at Sage Park. She's a talented and hard-working student, and I'm lucky to have her. She goes above and beyond. For example, in sixth grade, for her thirty minutes of French-related activity homework for the week, she spent hours baking macaroons, and the best ones that I've ever had at that. In seventh grade, she topped herself by spending days making homemade croissants for her peers. While Audrey has progressed through hard work and dedication in her communication and baking skills in French, she's a hard-working kind and focused as today as she ever was three years ago. Audrey is mature, beyond her years, and it has been so much fun to be a part of her journey. I can't wait to hear how her story unfolds." Also throughout her years at Sage Park Middle School, Audrey has set ambitious goals for herself, and through determination and perseverance, she's truly demonstrated academic excellence. Ms. Ryan, her school counselor, has noted that Audrey is a prime example of a well-rounded, highly-accomplished, achieving young lady. Her drive and dedication to academic excellence is clearly evident and warrants recognition. Madam President and the board, I present to you Ms. Audrey King.
All right, Madam President, members of the boards, our viewers here and our viewers at home, our audience here and viewers at home. I am very proud today to present some amazing results that we've recently received from the State Accountability Report. I just want to start by saying I am very, very proud of the hard work of our staff, our teachers, and most importantly, our students. We have definitely seen an incredible increase in our academic performance, and that is such a great thing to start off the year with, to give us the push that we need, telling us that we are on the right path, going in the right direction with what we're doing. So just a quick reminder before we get started, these are our two priorities. So we are focused on climate and culture and academics. So when we talk about climate and culture, we know our four Cs. We have a very laser-like focus on our four Cs, which are being courageous, caring, committed, and creative. We do realize that if we do not get the culture where it needs to be, academics will never fall in place. So this is our focus on culture. And our second wheel on the right is our academic wheel, where it portrays our highest aspiration, which is our mission, which is to develop the genius in every child. And what we're doing as a school district in order to ensure that we are developing the genius in every child. All right, so the State Accountability Report for our new members or our families who are not too familiar with it, our State Accountability Report is a state measure where it looks at different indicators. So it looks at twelve indicators. Some of the indicators have sub-indicators, so in total, we have twenty-two indicators that the state looks at. It looks at academic performance, it looks at student growth, it looks at how well we're doing in terms of preparing our students to be college and career-ready, it looks at physical fitness assessment. So the idea here is to look at a number of indicators so that we're not just focused on one number with reading and math, but we're looking at the child in the district as a whole. Indicators are, so schools are categorized into tiers. We've got five different tiers and the explanation for it. We've got five different tiers and the explanation for each tier. Currently Windsor Public Schools as a whole, as a district, we have surpassed seventy percent, which puts us in a Tier Two category. However, each school has a tier depending on and based on their score that they have accumulated for each school. These are the indicators and the weight for each indicator. So just very quickly so that we have a better understanding of what we're looking at. At every level, elementary, middle and high school, the indicators are weighted differently. So for example, if you look at elementary school or if you look at middle school, thirty percent of the weight of our total number comes from student academic achievement. When we talk about academic achievement, we're strictly talking about if students have met grade level expectations or not. However, you'll see that a bigger number, which is forty percent of our indicator, is based on student academic growth. So it puts more value on if students have grown. So for example, if a student starts fifth grade at a second grade level, but they have grown from a second grade level to a fifth grade level, they will be counting for us way heavier than a student that started at grade level. That puts an emphasis on growth. So we're trying to grow everybody, no matter where they started. Our goal is to take students from where they are and grow them. The other weights, the ten and the ten and the five, these are all the different indicators that have less of a weight. So such as physical fitness, which is our assessment that we take in our PE classes. Also, on track for graduation, if you look at the high school, our very bottom line, a lot of the heaviest weight, the fifty-two percent, comes from students achieving mastery or standards benchmarks on the SAT. And then all the other subcategories add up to the remaining fifty percent. So overall, we're really trying to just push students academically as well as on the other indicator. As a school district, we are at seventy-two point one percent. So last year, we were at sixty-nine point one. So sixty-nine point one puts us at a Category Three district. This year, we have passed the seventy, we're at seventy-two point one, which actually we're at seventy-one, we're at seventy-two point one and the state is at seventy-one point eight. So we have surpassed the state, we're outperforming the state average. This is an indicator that we always look at how well Windsor is doing in relation to the state. Because that gives us kind of a better indication of not just what we are doing. However, some years you will see the state average go up. So if we also go up, then we're not really doing anything extra. But when you see a district outperforming the state average, that means that we are doing better than fifty percent of the districts in Connecticut. This is our ELA growth indication, indicator. And overall, if you look at our score from twenty-four, twenty-five, we have outperformed the state average. Like I said, we've increased by five percent overall and we outperformed the state by two point eight percent. Also something that is very important to note, that when we look at our high-needs students, so our high-needs students are our students with special needs, our MLL students and our students that fall under the free and reduced lunch. So our high-needs students have grown four point six percent over the previous year and we're also surpassing the state by three point one percent. Looking at the math indicator, again, we are seeing, even though we've seen a decrease from last year to this year by one point four percent, we have actually surpassed the state average by one point five percent. So overall, as a state, the state has gone down when it comes to math scores, but we have not gone down with the same percent as the overall state. So we're still outperforming the state when we're looking at our. Our high-needs students also have increased by a point six percent, putting us above the state average by one point five percent. One of the indicator that we're very proud of is our English progress towards English proficiency. So those are our students that speak English as a second language. We have a good number of our students in this year that have made an incredible increase in their proficiency, in their oral proficiency by sixteen point four percent. An increase by fifteen point nine percent increase from last year. When we see increases that are over ten percent, that is considered an incredible increase. So we are very proud of our multi-language learners and our multi-language teachers. Indicator five looks at our ability as a district to prepare students for college and career readiness. So there are two indicators under Indicator five. One of them is the percent of students taking classes. So this indicator looks at the number of students in eleventh and twelfth grade that have taken AP classes, ECE classes or two classes in the same CTE pathway. So you look at the number of students and we are at ninety-seven percent. So we're doing a great job in making sure that students are actually in those classes. Where we have a lot of work to do is making sure that students are passing the exams for the classes. So yes, students are taking AP classes, but the percent of students that are actually passing the AP exam is not where we want it to be. And this is an area that we've highlighted as an area of growth for us. Indicator seven looks at our on-track for high school graduation. And basically, that looks at our number of ninth graders in high school that end the year with at least six credits. That is an indication that they will be on track to graduate in four years. We've increased that indicator by one, one point five percent from the previous year. Also, one of our major highlight is our six-year graduation. And again, these are our students with special needs that are allowed six years to graduate high school. We have increased that number by twelve point seven percent. So we're doing something great and amazing with our students with special needs in terms of preparing them, getting them to actually also graduate high school within the six-years frame that they have. Indicator ten looks at our post-secondary entrance and that is all our seniors that have applied and got accepted into a two-to-four-year college, two or four-years college. So we've increased the indicator by three point two percent. And the last indicator we're looking at tonight is our fitness, physical fitness assessment. That is an assessment that is taken at different points in a student career from fourth grade all the way to tenth grade in high school. And overall, as a district, we've increased by seven point nine percent, which is the target, the state target is seventy-five and we as a district, we're at fifty point nine percent. So we still have a long way to go to meet our target, but historically, fitness assessment has been an indicator that we've really been working on because we feel like that is one indicator that is kind of a low-hanging fruit that we can get our students to pass these assessments. And a seven point nine percent from year to year that will definitely put us at our target in a few years. Overall, when we look at our districts, overall, looking at our district performance from eighteen nineteen. So eighteen nineteen, that's that year that COVID first hit, all the way to twenty-four, twenty-five. We have, we've been, you know, like COVID hit, we took a, we, we took a hit downwards. And then we started going back off from twenty-two, twenty-three all the way to this year. In the past two years, over the past two years, we've increased by four point six points, while the state has increased by two point one point. So we've doubled the state increase as a district. Again, that is an indicator when we, when superintendents and the commissioner, when they look at the performance of school districts compared to everybody else, they look at how you're doing in relation to the state. This chart just kind of gave you a quick look at, these are the twenty-two indicators that I've talked about. All the yellow indicators that are highlighted, this is where we have, as a district, we have outperformed the state. So we're, you know, I'm giving you a look, a deeper look at which ones we're, we're really doing better and which ones we need to work on. So when you look at our Indicator one, which is our ELA and mass performance. So again, the performance is looking at students that are on grade level. We do have some work to do. Where we're doing great is growing our students. So we are doing a good job growing our students, but we still need to do more in order to get them at grade level. Also, if you look at the, I don't know if you can see, but this talks about the gap indicators. So the state also looks at how we're doing in terms of closing the gap between our population, all our students and our students with special needs and high needs. And over the years, we've been closing the gap in ELA and in mass. We still have work to do in terms of our graduation rate gap. Again, this looks at our, closing the gap with the state. So looking at seventeen, eighteen, we were below the state average by four point two. So over the past six years, we have closed that gap with the state and now we have outperformed the state by zero point three points. This chart right here compares us to us. So it compares us to ourselves from last year. That is something that I always like to look at because yes, even though we are doing better than the state average, our goal is to do better every year than we did the year before until we hit our target, which is seventy-five percent in each and every indicator. Some of the ones that I really want to pull your attention to is our English language, our progress towards English language proficiency. Fifteen point nine percent increase from last year, so that's incredible. Also is a twelve point seven percent increase for our six-year graduation rate for our student with high needs. That's again, an incredible increase. And the last indicator is our post-secondary entrance. So the number of students that we're actually getting to apply and get accepted to two or four-years universities. All right, so we always hear about Windsor being an alliance district, which, you know, I don't know if it's a bad thing considering that we do get money being in alliance district. But if we have to be in alliance district to get the money, at least I would like to be number one. And we have been working our way towards number one. So three years ago, we were number nine, last year, we're number eight, this year, we're number three. So outperforming us is Vernon and Norwalk and our goal obviously is to not just be number one, but who knows what the future of the alliance district is. But we are working our way out from being the lowest school districts in Connecticut. These are all the indicators and I'm just, just a general look per school. So every single school in the district has increased their performance indicator, except we took a little dip at the middle school and we, we think we kind of have an idea of what happened there. And we definitely have a plan to address that dip. All right, so just overall next steps, we are, we've realized that looking at our mass data from year to year, our numbers are stagnant. So we are, we've created a committee that is looking at our curriculum, district-wide, K-12. And we are hoping to come with a recommendation to the board for a pilot of an adoption of a new program that we hope to help us in terms of our mass data. We're going to continue to work on our fitness assessment that is an area, like I said, that we feel like it's, it's a low-hanging fruit that we can target and we can work on. We're also working with the high school on our high school, the track, on-track for high school graduation, creating systems and putting systems in place for early intervention so that we're catching our ninth graders before they fail the first semester and then interventions in place in order for them to end the year with the six credits that they need in order to be on track for graduation. We're also putting a huge emphasis on chronic absenteeism. Even though we have been doing better, we still have a long way to go. So we have a lot of different and new systems that we have in place at the school level and as well as the district level to target students that are at risk of being chronically absent. And trying to understand why we, we do see some patterns and trying to understand the patterns and supporting families to help us get students to school. Any questions?
Any question? Okay, Mr. Fanos, then you said one, and then Mr. Lockhart, in that order.
Regarding physical fitness, what is the reason for being below the state target? Do you have anything summary to say about that? I mean, more overweight or?
No, I mean, the fitness assessment is four components and it requires students to do different things like run a mile, do push-ups, a certain number of push-ups. And we just, we have been having a hard time, one, getting students to actually take the assessment and two, trying to get the student at a, at the benchmark so that they're passing the assessment.
We have physical education, right, every year?
Yes.
I mean, we have outstanding athletic program, so there's a little disconnect here.
Absolutely, and that is one of the strategies that we've put in place where we're going to ask our student athletes to take the fitness assessment with their coaches, hoping that that will produce a better result than taking it during like a PE class. So there is no regulation in terms of like when the fitness assessment, especially in high school, can be taken. It's a, it's a window. So as long as they take it within that window, then it, it counts for us. So we're, we're trying to put systems in place to encourage students to take it seriously so that we can see the results. Because like you said, we don't, we do know that we have a lot of student athletes. And when we look at their data, it does not match what they do on the field outside.
Right. Now could you, could you talk a little bit more about the attendance teams and what their work?
Yep, so every building has an attendance team that includes the school nurse, the social work, the school principal. And it includes also our FRCs, which are the connections between our, you know, families and our schools. And we look every week, so they have to meet weekly. We have an attendance tracker, so at any point in time, I can pull up the attendance tracker and I can see exactly every single student in the district, how many days they have missed and the reason why they've missed it. We have targets, so after five absences. And again, you have to also keep in mind that chronic absenteeism doesn't care if it's excused or non-excused. And that's how the state looks at it. If you're absent, you're absent, they don't really care why. So unfortunately, we, you know, we, we look at our data, you know, if you're sick, you're sick. And you know, we do encourage parents to keep their kids home if they're sick. However, we, we do have, this is why we have an intervention team in place. So when we are seeing a pattern of students being absent or late and they don't have an excuse, like they're sick, then we, after five absences, they get a letter, ten absences, they get another letter with a referral to services in town. Fifteen absences, they do get a call to DCF because by law, we have to report that as educational negligence to DCF.
Just a little, back on the, on the first, Ed, one question. In, in physical education, do we, we give grades, right? So if they can't pass, you know, the push-ups or something like that, they, they're marked down, is that correct? Or if they, whatever the running is or?
No, so the assessment, the, the physical fitness assessment for the state is not really part of, it could be like, so they do different activities to prepare and leading up to the assessment and that's where, what they get graded on. But the actual assessment, if they fail it, it, it doesn't mean that they are failing the class. You see what I mean?
Right, okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Well, for the record, I never passed it. I just never did. I just dangled there, couldn't do the pull-up, you know, it is what it is, you know, but I'm okay. I promise.
How do I follow that? So we're about to be in the throes of budget season and I want to call out the fact that when Windsor became an alliance district, there was originally thirty districts that were part of that program. And one of the benefits of that program was protecting the money that was coming from the state and it would always be flat-funded. And when there was a spell of time when the state was cutting everybody else's budgets and ECS formulas, the thirty alliance districts were protected and that money continued to flow. And it's been consistently a political hot topic of, well, we're one of the thirty worst districts. Then it went to thirty-three, then it went to thirty-six. And it was always perceived as Windsor being one of the worst districts in the state, which is clearly not the case. I've been an advocate of making sure we come off the alliance district with the understanding, one, that we're performing in the classroom with the results. But number two, if we stop being an alliance district, then you lose that hedge of protection of your money coming from the state. So it's a double-edged sword depending on how you use it. At the end of the day, Windsor Public Schools are performing well. Statutorily, there's no way that we can come off, there's no off-ramp. Statutorily, there's no way that we can come off. There's no off-ramp for Windsor to stop being an alliance district. So we have to continue to proceed as one with the understanding that there's more reporting and more stringent guidelines that we have to follow to make sure that we're doing the work we're supposed to be doing. So in essence, these thirty-six districts are under a greater microscope than the other districts within the state. And to see that we're number three out of thirty-six, and I know Dr. McCary very well and Vernon, he works very hard, this, this is really, really great news, but I will continue to say from this dais, Windsor is not an alliance district. We have great kids, we have great instruction, we have great things going on, and to have this negative connotation upon us sometimes can be flipped for personal agendas and propaganda. And that's not what we are here in Windsor Public Schools. So just want to say congratulations to the district and all the staff and all the students and the support systems within the homes.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any questions about the kind of, okay, Mr. Madison, anybody on this side? Okay, Mr. Madison.
I just have one small comment. Almost every slide had relative to what, compared to what? I weren't free if it was this reporter or others, but I've always said, relative to what? And so the fact that this compares us to the state on almost every slide is fantastic. So just from a procedural perspective, thank you for that.
Any other questions about the accountability report? Alright. Thank you. Dr. Haiti and team. Awesome report out.
We, you'll send this to us electronically?
Electronically, please. Thank you.
It's in the packet.
It's on, board, it's on the board book. Wonderful. So moving right along with the agenda, next we have audience to visitors. Audience to visitors is time where folks in the audience, whether they're here in person in the boardroom or online, they can speak to the board. You have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Vice President, two, two and a half minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will hold up a card as a warning and at three, he'll ke- keep it held up for the people online. He'll have to interrupt you. So I'm going to toss it over to Secretary Soder for some remarks and then we'll have Robin Daly from the superintendent's office take it from there. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Secretary of the Windsor, Connecticut Board of Education, I extend a warm welcome to all of those joining both in-person and online. The board, superintendent and I are delighted that you're here as we work together to fulfill our mission to develop the genius in every child and create lifelong learners. This is a regular board meeting where we focus on our core responsibilities, setting goals, approving policy and making decisions regarding budgets, contracts and personnel for the effective operation of Windsor Public Schools. All items on our agenda have been posted in accordance with state law. Please remember that the daily management of our school system is the responsibility of the superintendent. To ensure an effective and respectful meeting, we ask for your cooperation. Please silence all cell phones and communication devices. We welcome public comment during the designated time on our agenda. Please maintain decorum and courtesy, refraining from talking while others are speaking. Our proceedings are legally mandated to be accurately recorded and the chair may periodically request quiet if noise interferes, fears with this process. Thank you for your interest and for joining us this evening. We are very proud of our school system and greatly appreciate your involvement. Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within Zoom. When you are called on to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, address and comment. Please do not place the call on speaker phone. No comments will be made by the board at this time. At this time, there are attendees online, but there are no hands raised.
Wonderful.
I'm giving you a time check. It is seven fifty-five. If we need to go past thirty minutes, seven fifty-five is the benchmark time that we're starting at thirty minutes.
Thank you. Vice President Lockhart, duly noted. Go ahead. The chair. Yes, yes, the chair is open.
Hello, good evening. My name is Natalia Reyes-Galarza and I'm a junior at Windsor High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of the entire student section of the Windsor High School Band to share our perspective on the proposed change to band credits for next year. Last month, I was here at the Windsor High School Orchestra, performing for the board. I originally came that night to represent the orchestra, but by the end of the eve- evening, I realized I also needed to represent the band. I'm not only part of the orchestra, I am a proud member of the marching band and jazz band. Tonight, I want to speak about the proposed change to band credits and why I believe it's important to look at the bigger picture before finalizing this decision. If this change goes through, band students will receive the same amount of credit as classes that meet only during the day, as in the school day, even though we dedicate significantly more time and effort beyond school hours. I've been both part of the orchestra and marching band very, since my very first day, like at high school when I stepped into those doors. But even before that, I was working hard to earn my place in the marching band. Each year, we start with a week-long summer band camp that helps freshmen and returning members get into marching band shape. We play our instruments, learn our drills, work out and build friendships that help last throughout the, the school year. Being in band isn't just an elective that ends when the final bell rings. We spend countless hours after school at rehearsals, football games, parades, pep rallies and other community events. None of these activities are optional. They're all a part of our grade. If we miss an event, we're required to make it up. And for jazz band members, there's even more. We have to learn both marching band and symphonic music, as in concert music, on our own time outside of school and rehearsal hours. There's also a financial commitment. Band participation comes with cost, uniforms, instruments, travel expenses and sometimes private lessons. Many of us and our families make sacrifices to stay involved because we love what we do and believe it's worth it. Reducing the credit for this work makes it feel like that dedication and effort are being undervalued. I understand that this proposal is being presented as an equity measure, but I hope the board also considers fairness, recognizing the time, energy and commitment that all band students devote to representing Windsor High School and our community. When I speak tonight, I'm not only sharing my own experience, but the collective, collective voice of the students who give their time, talent and heart to this program. We are simply asking for our hard work to be valued equally to the effort we give. Thank you for your time and for listening to the voices of the students who are directly impacted by this decision.
Hello, my name is Malia Turner. I'm also a junior at Windsor High School and I've been in the band for three years. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the change in the credits. I played the trumpet since JFK. I, I played in band in middle school. And the things, as you get to high school, things obviously get harder. And when I got to band in high school, I wanted to quit. We've had, we had rehearsals two to three times a week and I didn't see the value in band in my first year. But the requirement and the ma- and the demand for being a part of it was immediate. It was a big leap and for middle school and har- greater than I could ever imagine. My sophomore year is when I really started to understand the importance of band. I joined the wrestling team, the soccer team. I was taking AP classes for the first time and dealing with personal things. It was a lot to balance. You might think all of these things are things that come along with being an involved student and they are, but honestly, the hardest thing out of all of these, out of everything I do is band. As Natalia said, like along with all the like performances, it's a lot to handle. You can't compare band to something like a sport because band is more than a sport. You're not getting graded for how you perform in a game. If you do bad in a game or don't show up to practice, it's not going to affect your grade or GPA like band would. You can't com- compare it to something like robotics because every, everyone who takes robotic, the robotics class isn't in the robotics club or on the team. If you take band, you're a part of band, required to do everything that comes along with it. Being in band goes way beyond any sport or club in every aspect. As for comparing band to like choir or orchestra, there, some of the requirements are the same, but the hours that go, that go into band are greater than any other music class. Band starts before you even walk through the high school doors. As Natalia said, we have band camp. It's a lot. Okay. Personally, what the one point four credits means to me, I don't really care about the one point four credits. When I took band, I, I didn't even know it was like one point four credits. It's the fact that it's being taken away is that what's, what's wrong? It's been one point four credits for a very long time and the fact that people are trying to take it away means you don't see the value in band. You'll never really understand the, the importance and meaning of band until you're in it and you've been in it. Even your first year in band, you can't really understand band. So for people who have never experienced even like the slightest amount of band to, to make a decision that affects us in the future is a lot. I've learned things in band that I use in my life daily. It's more than a class. Equity. The definition of equity according to the Merriam-Webster dictionary is fairness or justice in the way people are treated. To say one point, to say the one point four credit, change in one point four credits is an equity, equity issue goes against the definition of equity itself. The same things will still be required in band, which is inequitable because myself, wait, I'm done. For the decision to be, to remove one point for credits without any input or compromise from the people who are actually being affected by this, check, checks off all the boxes of inequitable. That's that.
I am Allison Hogland and I am the current band boosters president. I have been involved with the band program as part of the boosters for the past four years. I became involved when Mr. Monroe became the director and my son Tim was a sophomore in high school. I want to speak tonight about the proposed change in credits from one point four to one. When I first learned of this, I was very upset about the harm this could do to the program and I still feel this change would be detrimental to the growth of the program as experienced over the past four years. I also wrote a letter to the board and to the interim superintendent and I don't want to rehash all of my concerns that I've stated there. My major points were that the band is a community by itself that also impacts our school and town community. Changing the credits would limit us and our impact on the community. I have firsthand experience with band as I was part of my high school marching band and concert band. We were a hundred and fifty-piece competitive marching band that won many awards, just as our band has been doing for the past four years. The memories from my time in band have stayed with me and it added so much to my high school gears. It also instilled values such as giving back to community and leadership. We are creating the same experience here in Windsor and our band is award-winning. These kids work hard and are creating memories and learning valuable lessons about being part of a community. If we reduce the number of credits, we will lose aspects of the community we have created. I have researched other programs in the state. Some offer one credit and others offer more than one credit, with some offering as much as one point seven five credits for band. These programs that offer more than one credit are very large, successful, award-winning bands. That is exactly what the parents, students and Mr. Monroe are trying to create here and it is working. Since my time with the band, we have almost doubled in size and won, and won many awards. Most notably last spring, they won the Esprit de Corps Award. This award is given to recognized groups who embody the spirit of the group, which is a shared sense of camaraderie, pride, enthusiasm and devotion to a common cause. This speaks volumes to the type of program we are creating as well as the dedication and time the students are putting into the band. The band is a perfect representation of the four Cs that Windsor is so proud of. Reducing the credits from one point four to one would discredit all the hard work these students put in and harm the culture we are creating. I thank you for listening and also reading my letter that I sent.
Hello, board. Dr. Haiti. Been a resident of Windsor the last three years and I think I've been very impressed with what I've seen since moving-
You just, yeah, state your name.
James Hafley, sorry. James Hafley. I've been a resident of Windsor now for the past three years, having purchased a house here two years back. I've seen multiple kids go through the high school of, of my blended family and now have a, a son in the marching band. And I've been able to see and watch firsthand the instruction and how the team, how the whole band comes together. I think from our first principal's perspective, when I heard that there was just going to be this decre- decrease, I didn't really know what it meant. So I started asking why on all levels, right? Where would this come from? Why, why now after twenty-five years? I heard equity, I heard reference to other programs, I heard guidelines. So with that, I started to do some research, look around and just kind of around those themes, present what, what I found and what I see. So I think first, you know, from a marching band perspective, right? Band delivers more instructional time than standard electives. You heard this from others. That one point four credits reflects actual contact hours, right? After-school rehearsals, whether it's camps, football games, it's other activities. I don't know who was at the Veterans Day ceremony the other day, right? That represents the town of Windsor. From a comparison, you know, one credit elective is, is not commensurate, right? On the equity argument, reducing the one credit would actually undervalue what these students are doing, participants of band camp, and penalize those students who invest greater time compared to the peers. And I think, you know, aligning with Dr. Haiti's equity focus, right? Credit must match commitment. It's been mentioned, you look across with larger programs, with established programs that are growing and doing something for the community and the students that participate in it, that's more than one credit. I've seen one, one point two five to one point five. There's Brookfield, Robert Fitch, right? So I think one of the risks is dropping the one credit really devalues, makes Windsor less competitive and attractive and hurts the recruitment and morale. You know, I didn't, I didn't speak to the others, the band that was here before, but that's kind of a common theme, right? You see what these kids do and how they build upon it. And from Dr. Haiti, you know, as the leader superintendent, acting superintendent of schools, right? We want Windsor to be a Finland of Connecticut. So I've heard this repeatedly. And from Finland, Finland rewards depth and not cuts. And standardizing downward really contradicts pure excellence. So I, I'll leave it there, right? And maybe I'll follow up with a letter. But just ask that you maintain this level of caliber. And I also fear just personally for the whole program, to have a great program, you need great instructors. And if you decrease the value and how you view the program from one point four to one, I fear that that could lead in the shorter, medium term or longer term, lo- losing the instruction. So thank you.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Haiti. My name is Tareka Roberts. I am a school social worker here in Windsor, along with a football coach. And I am speaking on behalf of my first job as a father for my daughter who is also a member of the band team, or excuse me, band program. Band and music has saved my life and unlocked my mind as a youth and it's done for my son who's a senior that plays football, but still plays guitar. It also does for my daughter and my daughter behind her. And I'm hopeful that we can find a resolution to support our children of Windsor with band. Not only does it, you know, make our community stronger, you know, as a football program, we also support the band. You know, we're one hand, watch the other. Again, I'm just talking on behalf of a concerned parent, of a coach, a steward in this community. And the most important thing I can do is be there for Director Monroe and for my daughter and for all the children that need the same level of equity in this town. Thank you very much. and for all the children that need the same level of equity in this town. Thank you very much.
Okay. Hello, everyone. We are the Crittises. And I would say that we have been in some rough times with this band, you know, performances and the talent that came out of it for the last few years, but I think we're going on the upswing. And it's because of this gentleman right here behind us, which we don't want to lose. Okay? Because he is very critical to this program, to the band, to Windsor, to the state of Connecticut, to the kids that are in the program. I can attest to that. We have sons that have been through this program. We have grandkids now that are in it. And they're in it because it's a lot of work. I mean, they, they don't want to do the work, okay? At all. But when they see that they're getting one point four credits, it does help them to do the work. Because again, rewarded for the work that they're putting in, the extra work, extra time. And, and they see the results. And you guys should see the results. I was there for some dinner the other past week with this band playing. And it increased from, I think, eight kids of last year to now twenty. It was, it was amazing. And these kids are in this thing doing a lot of work, hard work. And some of them are in, don't even know they're getting an extra point four credits. Some of them do, but the key is, is that they're getting rewarded for all this work that they're putting in. And the attention to that band at that dinner should have been more, should have been better. These people deserve more. These kids deserve more. This guy deserves more. My kids, I can attest, my own sons are a product of this school and have done great things by taking advantage of the, what the school had to offer. This past year, they've won Grammys. Anybody know that? They should. Okay? You got to, students are this program that have won Grammy this year for Best Latin Jazz Album. Either their name. So if you don't know about it, please look it up and please support them and buy the album. Okay? Because it's a great album. And I'm not saying that because I'm dad, because I would tell him it's the worst album in the world if it was. But please, don't do whatever this cut, if you got one. Oh, does that mean I have to get out of this thing? Can she, okay. Okay. Okay, okay. So my wife can speak after this, but I'm just saying that please keep things as it is because we're moving up. We're bringing this program in a better position than it has been in the last couple of years. It was a best program three or four or five years ago, but we got to keep it going.
Speaking from a point of view of a mother's musicians. I am of course Mrs. Curtis and I have been in Windsor for many years. We've been here for over forty years. And we own a beautiful home, Ninety-One Pine Lane. And we also have children that, that own a home as well in Windsor, which is a blessing. After all the, the struggles that they've been through and all the things being musicians that they are, they're still able to be able to be successful in the music field, which is a great thing. This is what we want for all the children that aspire to have this gift of being able to want to do music. Music is beautiful. It calms the souls. And if you love, you listen to any kind of music, whether it's classical, whether it's jazz, whether it's Latin music, whatever it is, it does during, especially during the epidemics, which has helped a lot of us at that time when we listened to the music. And that's when time, when we spend most time with the music. But I can say that this man that you have has done a great thing in, in, in the, in the high school this year. I have seen the musicians that have come through, the teachers that have come through Windsor. And I can say that this man has gone way and beyond his duty of being a teacher. We can look up to him as one of the greatest teachers that Windsor has. And if all the teachers are like him, I think we would be more than blessed for our children to be able to get in any field and be able to want to be successful in that field that they love and they desire to be who they are. I think that this man has brought enlightenment to the school and to us as well. We're looked at differently because we're seeing all the growth that this music department is doing. This is a beautiful growth that we're doing and we really need him to be here part. And we, if, when he leaves us, we hope he don't, that we can be able to find someone like him. And that's going to be very difficult because most people just want to do the minimal. He's gone way and beyond and our children have worked very hard. My, my grandchildren want to be there. They desire to be there, even though it's a hard thing to do. I mean, if you are a student and you have all this pressure on you, school and everything else, music calms you and really brings you to a different level and you need that. Just like you need basketball and you, that you need other sports and other activities that the school needs, this is also needed. I think this is one of the most important programs that we have in Windsor High. And we support it greatly. Thank you very much for having me here and thank you for the time that you guys take to be part of our lives. Thank you so much.
I want to say one more thing. I just want all the students that are here to support the credits. Stand up. Stand up or raise your hands or something and show them that you're here and that you're supporting us. Come on. They could be watching TV.
Hi. I'm Siobhan Sanders. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm finding a need. So my child is a junior in high school now. When he first started the band, the marching band here, I'll be honest, I was a parent that was annoyed because I'm like, this is high school. Like, why are you having to do stuff on a weekend and at night when we have other commitments? That being, you know, my child's a part of an outside music program with Windsor Fife and Drum, which was a very dedicated all-year program. This was interfering, but now I know why. Because I'm three years in, me and Monroe, and he's excellent. But I wanted something that was going to be as structured, as dedicated as the other program he was in, where I could see the benefits when he moves on to college. And now I see that this program is doing that. So my child, and probably the others, if they lose that extra credit, I'm not saying they're going to lose that dedication, but what extra is in it for them to keep going past this? It's now just a one credit like everything else they need. And this program in my eyes has gone completely above and beyond what I invested in previously. So I feel as though I'm getting the equal amount of the financial investment I put in before here. And now that I have a financial investment here, it's equal. So it would probably hurt a lot of the students and incoming students if they lose that extra part of that credit. That's it.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President and members of the Windsor Board of Education.
First.
And Dr. Haiti and Ms. Brooklyn Smart, congratulations on your, all your appointments. My name is Kayon Brown Palmer and I live at one twenty-three East View Drive. I have lived in Windsor for thirteen, for the last thirteen years. I am the proud mother of two sons. Our eldest graduated from Windsor High School with the class of twenty twenty-four, participating in JROTC throughout his four years and playing the viola in the Windsor High School Orchestra. Our younger son, a member of the class of twenty twenty-seven, is currently a junior at Windsor High School and is a part of the award-winning high school band. He joined the band last year in his sophomore year. My youngest, he is very shy, very introverted. But since joining the band, he did not join anything in his freshman year. But since joining the band in his sophomore year, I've seen him become an outstanding young man. He's more outgoing and around his friends. He's very friendly-er now and interacts more with his, his peers. As a parent, when attending the many local ceremonies where the band is performing, I is, I observe his behavior and that of his peers. The students all seem to enjoy playing their respective instruments. They play heartily at the high school football games and local parades and they sound so melodious. When you attend their performance, it is of a high-level caliber concert and that is accredited to their director, Mr. Brandon Monroe. I will also add that in last year for the, the playoff game for the football season, the band was not scheduled to play. They received their invitation at the last minute and I believe it was either in the teens or twenty degrees, twenty degrees weather temperature and they were out there playing their instrument and encouraging the, the fans and the football team. I am here to speak this evening to speak on behalf of the board's consideration to remove the point four credit from students' one point four credit accumulation. I urge you to ask yourself this question. What is it that you as a board are looking to gain by removing the point four credit? The students give their all, their all at their performances, whether it is local, within town or nationally at their competitions. Each year, as mentioned before, they have brought home awards from their competitions. The students in band, choir and orchestra all perform at the local, state and national, and national level outside of regular school hours. If the goal is to equalize credit accumulation across the music departments, consider extending the one point four credit offering to choir and orchestra as well. Additionally, I will put in the plug, you can also add it in for JROTC students as well. Once again, I will leave you with this question. What is the reason of removing the one point four credit accumulation from the Windsor High School band? I hope you are all able to come to an agreeable decision on behalf of our students and families. Thank you for your consideration regarding this matter.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Pales, do you want to extend?
I think we could extend.
Thirty minutes?
Well, I'm thinking thirty minutes, okay.
We have to do it in blocks.
You have to do it in blocks at thirty? Well, I'll go along with that. I'll move that we. Yes, I'll second it.
I move that we extend audience to.
I move that we extend audience to visitors for another thirty-minute block.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Ayes. Ayes have an eight zero zero to extend audience to visitors to.
So with that being said, with the extension, we started this at seven? Fifty-five. So that means we will go towards eight fifty-five.
Okay.
Hello. My name's Deb Whittamore and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight and for extend, extending the time, knowing how passionate so many people here feel about this issue. My son Ethan Whittamore has been a member of the band all four years. He is a senior. And the band has been a transformative part of his life, I would say. And it's not because it's any old band. When he came in, he was pretty shocked and we were as parents about the level of commitment and discipline required as compared to the middle school level. And as other parents have said, that was a challenge at first. But as the slogan or the, the motto that we've had for the band about raising the standard, I think that's exactly what it did in his life that year and all three years and has done in so many other students' lives. More than any other class or commitment that he's had at Windsor High, this class has just encouraged excellence, discipline, commitment and a sense of community, being part of something bigger than yourself, being the best version of yourself. And it's been amazing to see the growth in him and in so many of the kids. Knowing that they're, they're working for it and that sense of accomplishment they get for putting in the hard work. I did send a letter to the board. I don't want to belabor all the points and a lot has already been touched on. So just a couple other things I'll touch on are, again, as it's been mentioned, if it is a matter of equity and the amount of time put in and credits, would we not look to see if there are any other types of classes that have this type of commitment? And instead of decreasing credits, increasing the credit so that everyone is getting awarded for that extra work being put in. The other thing is I don't believe any of the other groups, something special about the band is that they are meeting after school hours so they can meet all together. In order to be a band of excellence, the entire band needs to work together. And the programs in this state that are the high-level programs, they're meeting together. When I was in high school band, our band met as an entire group. When block scheduling was introduced and things were changed, that has not been a possibility. And I think in order to have the level of excellence that we want, that is one reason. They are spending an extra hour and a half every week practicing in order to raise the standard and be the band that they're called to be. So I would say that is something different about the band as compared to any other class at Windsor High. And I would encourage you all to consider that when you're making your decisions. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Jayden Daly. I'm in the band. I'm in the marching band and the jazz band. And it's a lot of work. It is. You know, for the, the playoff game, you know, I heard it was cold. It, it really was cold. I almost got frostbite that night. And I'm in the drum line, so I carry those big heavy drums that you hear. They're, they are very loud drums. My ears are ringing a lot and my back does hurt. And that does show the hard work of the percussion section because we do hold those big drums. And I, I'd say if we lost that point four credit, it wouldn't be worth, you know, the pain that we kind of have to endure for in band a little bit. And it's a lot of hard work. And especially in our classes because we have to learn sheet music and we got to get prepared for concert music. That's a lot of work. And we got to like learn all these parts in case like somebody's not at the concert and we have to, we have to play the part if they're not there. And it's, it's so much, it, it's so much to be in band. And it is totally worth the extra credit. And just if we lost it, then that would just be discouraging for most of, not even most, all of the band. Because all the work that we put in is just kind of, kind of, kind of, kind of wasted. It's wasted, I'd say. And yeah, thank you.
Are we good? Okay. Motion to close, unanimous, both close audience to visit?
One more?
Okay.
Hello, board members and Dr. Haiti. My name's Barbara Lacoste. Been living in Windsor for fifteen years now. And I was not expecting to speak tonight. My daughter came here for one of the awards. When I heard that the band was coming here and it had to do something with credits, I was positive that they were going to increase it to two credits. My daughter was in the band the first year, and I can't say enough good things about Mr. Monroe. It was a phenomenal place to be, as so many people have said. And she really enjoyed it, and she would have liked to continue. That's probably a whole other topic where AP classes conflict with band. But the one thing I wanted to say is, I have other children, and I actually homeschool them. And so when my daughter came in as a freshman, I was very aware that, they homeschooled through high school, so I was very aware of the number of credits that make a class, because I had to do their transcripts. And I had to record that and keep track of that. So at one point during the school year, I talked to Mr. Monroe because I was amazed at how many hours the students were being asked to participate. And I actually added them all up. And, you know, I'm not talking about practice time. I'm talking about football games, pep band, the community parades that other people have mentioned. And it was well over half a credit, if not a whole other credit. Like, it should have been one-point-seven-five or two credits. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if you have actually looked at the number of hours that these students participate. They do a remarkable job. And just as a resident of Windsor, I hope that you will keep the one-point-four or boost it up, to be honest. So thank you.
Unanimous to close audience to visitor? Go ahead.
One more?
One more.
Okay, hi. My name is Danny Overbaugh. I have one thing. I only have one thing I want to say. I just don't know, like, I can't imagine doing all the extra work if I'm only getting one credit. And I don't think that Mr. Monroe is going to want us to either. Like parades and, like, Veterans Day performances and football games. I don't think we're even going to do that if it's at one credit, so... Yeah.
My name is Emily Pollard. I am a freshman in the Windsor High School marching band. I am one of only three flutes in the entire band. The only other one is a junior who's currently playing percussion. So that makes it even more difficult than average. I had something to say and then I completely forgot. I'm so sorry.
That's okay, okay.
I have a friend, I'm not going to name names because that's rude. She is currently an eighth grader at Sage Park Middle School. And she mentioned to me a few days ago that she was really excited to go to high school because she wanted to join band. Want to mention this, the fact that the credits were possibly going to be lessened? She was shocked and extremely disappointed. And it's like, this is not just affecting the kids who are currently in band today. This is something that will affect everyone going forward. I have always suffered from lack of confidence. Heck, I am about this far from having an anxiety attack right now. But I think being part of band has made it easier, especially with Mr. Monroe's efforts to actually help me not be, like, freeze up when I'm scared. It's possible to completely erase that fear, but it's, but being part of band has helped me separate what I have to do from my own fears so I can do what I have to without freezing up and screwing everything up. Thank you for your time.
Unanimous to close audience to visitors? Okay. Okay, audience to visitors is closed. At eight-thirty-six. Is there a motion?
You want us to go to...
No.
You want to go right to it right now?
That's what we said.
I move that we move the superintendent's report, which is eight C and eight D. No, it's eight? No, we're going to do eight C, we're going to do the curriculum first, and then we're going to go to the program studies afterward.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so I move that we move to eight C and D of the agenda. And then once that's been adjudicated, we go back to the regular order.
I'll second.
All is in favor to make that adjustment to the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes eight-zero-zero. Dr. Haiti?
I got to go with the motions.
Okay, go ahead.
So we're going to split them. So, Madam President, I move that we approve as a second reading Agenda Item eight-C-one Geometry, eight-C-two English Seminar, English twelve, eight-C-three Human Geography, Global Studies, and eight-C-four Sports and Society.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries eight-zero-zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Lockhart.
Move that the board adopts as a second reading Items eight-C-five Film to Literature, eight-C-six Voices Under Fire, Literature, Censorship, and Advocacy, eight-C-seven African-American Literature, and eight-C-eight Leaving Your Legacy.
There's second?
I'll second.
Dr. Haiti?
I'm confused. You can speak to whatever you like. Am I speaking to the curriculum or am I doing my superintendent report first?
No, I think this is where Mr. Panos had requested that these be pulled. And that's why, so I would imagine we recognize Mr. Panos.
Right, and Mr. Panos, could you lead with your question on the second question, I believe?
Yes, this regards, let's see. You want to take them all or just one by the time? I'll just talk with film, film and literature.
Okay, so we are doing curriculum now, I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, treats films and movies like literature. I don't think this is really literature. Watching movies is not reading. So this doesn't strike me as a rigorous enough course to be, you know, an English elective. So I believe that one could just as easily create a course about making, using electronic games or the struggles in history of using TikTok. And so, you know, I am against kind of multiplying what can be considered as an academic English course, even if it's just an elective. So that's the first one. Would you like to respond to that one?
Sure. The purpose of the course is for students to apply Common Core standards to the analysis of film such that, similar to how they would apply analytical skills to written text. So I don't know if maybe that supplies any sort of clarification. So if you look at the course in the map right now, hopefully it would be clear there that it's film analysis. Such, I'll give an example. Unit one, Common Core Standard eleven-twelve-point-three, analyzing the impact of author's choices or filmmaker's choices regarding how to develop and relate elements of a story or drama through film. So the course isn't intended to be an analysis of literature. It's intended to apply literary analysis skills to the viewing of films, writing about, analyzing them, writing about them, interpreting the meaning, and using the same skills that students would learn to use in written text and film.
Okay. However, I think you could do the same thing with a lot of other items, like especially modern social media, right? You could probably make a course out of that. You could make a course out of a lot of things, right? So, you know, anyway, I really don't think that this is a course that we should have here. And I'm sure you can make something out of it, but I don't think it rises to the standard.
We appreciate the feedback. We did feel in writing the course and reviewing the contents of the course that there is a rigorous element to the course, especially in the analytical features of it and the writing that students are required to do. It's aligned with the core, just like any of other courses. And just a reminder to the board and to any viewers at home, the courses that we ended up pursuing as electives were the result of surveying the students about what are some of the courses you would like to pursue if we were to offer more electives in the English department when you're a senior. So this was one of the courses that students selected as an option. And also just a reminder to the board and to those at home who are viewing or listening, it is an elective, so students do not have to take the course. So if they or their families feel that the course is not rigorous enough for them, there are plenty of other options. But we appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. With regard to Voices Under Fire, it appears to be what curriculum writers call censorship, but it's not censorship to prohibit the dispensing of explicit and graphic sexual material to students. Freedom of expression is about political expression mainly. That's the First Amendment. You know, there are a lot of things that we can't say. For example, communicating physical threat, things like that. Censorship itself involves a government ban on a book and not when someone, you know, you get a parental organization that finds certain materials offensive and then come and ask for it, you know, to be removed or not included. After all, this is, it's a, you know, it's a school system and you don't have to put everything in it. That was recommended by the Library Association. So, you know, one of the things that they, like I say, that they object to is explicitly graphical sexual materials. You know, now to request that that not be included is not really censorship. So, you know, in looking through, you know, the curriculum matrix here or the curriculum, what do you call it? The mapping and the items. I came across a few of those that they put up as examples of things that were banned. I'll point out that censorship or banning can include failing to include. For example, if we have a number of, if you have books which counter what is being presented by one of, if you... There can be, let's say, a ban by omission. If you, all that you present is one side, then by omission, you omit the other side, and that's a form of banning too. It's not just what you put in and then someone asks you to remove. So I didn't see any understanding of that factor, which I think is the dominant factor here. So, you know, so I just wanted to know what assurances are there that this course will provide a balanced view of what is considered censorship.
So the question is about a balanced view? I just want to make sure I'm answering the question.
Yeah, that's, the question is about, you know, do you include books that criticize the books that you include? That, the ones now that you favor, for example. For example, the issue, you know, like sexually expressed materials that certain parental groups have objected to.
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer this question, maybe to your liking. However, I don't believe from what the subcommittee determined and what we determined and our teachers determined writing it that there's any sort of, like, political leanings to this course. In fact, the first unit is, the guiding question is, how can we define censorship? And how do definitions shift depending on the form of censorship? So this was intentionally left open-ended so that students can sort of co-create their ideas about what they believe censorship is. How has censorship evolved over time? And additionally, these are just examples, like what patterns in literary censorship can be identified. There's really nothing in the guiding questions or big ideas that are suggesting to students that censorship is one thing and not something else or is only certain things. The course actually begins, the first unit of the course is actually on the history of censorship. And the teacher who designed this, she brings in primary sources, really going into things such as court cases, Supreme Court precedent, famous cases even in Connecticut that are in our school law books that regard selection of materials and censorship of materials. So there's no, like, there's no preconceived idea with this course of what censorship is or is not. The purpose is for students to investigate initially through historical analysis what they've seen as examples of censorship through that. And they're kind of co-constraining it and defining it themselves. So I mean, I don't know if you can give me an example in here. I don't believe when we presented it to subcommittee that there were questions about there being, like, any issues about political leanings or the omission of certain viewpoints as far as censorship is concerned. So I'd be happy to address that, but I'm not sure where that is in this course.
Well, yeah, we had, like, let's take, let's take authors, let's say, like conservative, certain conservative authors, like Thomas Sowell. It'd be difficult to find them in, you know, considered, you know, that's... They give different views on many matters of concern regarding race and social justice and things like that. There are many others, Larry Elder, and there's a whole list, I think, that you could find. But they are not, they are omitted. There are also, there are also books about, for example, LGBTQ that may, that would disagree with many things that are presented, stuff like that. Now, is that...
The course is open to all of that. There's no, as I said, there's really no definition or parameters in place. If students want to talk about what you are referring to, very familiar with those authors, there's a place for that. There's, the course is not designed to have a certain political view of censorship. It's really left very open. Although it does sort of rest on the idea... Although it does sort of rest on the idea from unit one of historically, how has censorship been defined, like legally? How have we seen precedent-setting events, like cases happen nationally and in the state? So they are going to use historical references to build a definition as a class and as individuals, but there's nothing prohibiting students from exploring what you are talking about in this course.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else has anything to say about that?
Yes, there's something on this side. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for preparing these courses. Just from my experience having been at the school, I mean, I'm coming up on 10 years now, but not too, too long ago in the grand scheme of things. Any course I've taken, when there has been an opportunity for dialogue, it's always been presented to us pretty unbiased, sorry, in an unbiased manner and allowed the students to come to their own conclusion. So I'm thanking you for giving another opportunity, surrounding another subject for students to be of independent thought.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Panos?
Yep. The next one is the revision to the African-American Literature course, which are relatively familiar when it was first came on, right? But it, it appears that the revision to it is confined to novels that are about what is called unpacking systemic inequality and racial identity. Why can't it include novels with themes of personal conflicts, with one's own values or with societal or religious norms and family values by characters who happen to be African-American, apart from ideological theories about race and oppression? Black art authors can certainly deal with universal themes with settings in African-American communities, in addition to the many struggles against legal restrictions based on race. So this revision appears to narrow the scope for the American, the African-American Literature course. So am I wrong, Martha?
Actually, the teacher who wrote the course used the current board-approved course as the foundation for writing this one. So approximately, we were able to tell about 50 to 75% of the course that you see now as the revised version was actually taken from the original course, which was written in 2015, with which you're very familiar. We do, we do give, you know, teachers who are writing courses for us, we select them for their expertise, we select them for their background and what they've studied and what they have experienced teaching. The teacher who wrote this course under our supervision, we felt was an excellent choice. When we write curriculums, there are, I don't know, say, certain personal elements that go into it sometimes. And in this case, we felt very confident about this teacher's writing of this course in the manner that she did. Furthermore, I guess what I would say is, yes, it, it does include topics about systemic inequality and racial identity. From the person's point of view who wrote the course, she didn't really see how those things could be separated from the other topics that come up in black literature. And just as a student of literature for two different, in two different universities and courses that I've taken in black literature, I've never had those things separated. And maybe those are just the courses that I have taken. But it's very common that especially identity, inequality, these are, these are universal themes by many, not all, but many authors of color. I think, you know, just quite frankly, I think we'll have, you know, this is, this is a course that last time, 10 years ago, that we brought before the board, where the opposition to the course, we were being told that it wasn't academic enough. That's what, that was the feedback that we got, that the course was not rigorous enough, even though we were using Harvard's 2,000-page anthology as our primary textual source for the class. So I, I think we may just, with this particular course, sometimes run into some differences of opinion about what the course should be about. Again, it's, we, we, we actually really feel strongly that the person who wrote it did an excellent job. If students don't want to take the course, they don't have to. It is an elective. So the separation of the topics that you mentioned from other topics that are universal in many works of black literature would be a pretty tough task.
Well, I, I find it surprising.
Maybe you can give me an example. I don't, I don't know, like if you can give, and that can help us sometimes too, to understand another perspective. If I can get an example of how we might do that, then it gives us some way to kind of illuminate the, the question.
Well, okay, my, my criticism of it is that the way it was permitted someone to do this, if, if the teacher wanted to do, take this view, they could do it. But the way this has been revised seems to say that this is the way the course will be done, that it's based upon things like racial identity, which quite frankly, is, I think, not really something that should be encouraged. We shouldn't be, racial identity is not something that, that I think is an appropriate thing to be, to be encouraging. We, we should be viewing, teaching people to, to view each other as individuals. That's, that's the essence of it. Now, people can write about any topic and make it interesting, but this seems to be a, it doesn't, getting back to the theme, is, it seems to be a restriction. They can do this. If you're a teacher, obviously, you don't have to follow the exact pattern, but this one seems to confine it, to say that all we're going to find here, if we can't, if they find a book which is very interesting and, and does not involve these particular themes, then it's out of the, it's not part of the course. So I don't see why you would want to make that revision. It seems, it seems narrowing rather than broadening.
I understand your perspective. I, I appreciate the feedback and.
Okay.
This was the course that our curriculum writer wrote and we were very happy with the level of critical thinking involved in the course. We were very happy with the complexity of the texts that she selected. And again, we felt confident in her abilities and experiences as someone who has studied black literature and taught it for many years, that we, we were happy to take her lead. And this was the direction that we took with the course. So again, I appreciate the feedback. I understand where you're coming from. This is, this is the direction that we took for the course.
Thank you.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah. If I can address all four of these at once, just to keep it easy. So first of all, fantastic work. Love it. Just on film and literature, I understand what you're saying. There's a boatload of movies in there. Are they going to select some subset of that?
Yes, and we, just to talk to the board as a whole unit, which we did with the subcommittee, and also so families know, the teachers involved in, actually the department, I, I did send something out, and Dr. Martinez and I both sent something out to just remind them that we're going to do our best, even though this is a class for seniors, we're still in a school environment. We're going to greatly reduce, limit the, the number of films or shows that would be R-rated or, or MA, mature rated, and that it's our expectation that those are kept to a minimum. But that parents will also be getting a letter home and communication for anything that's being shown, so that they're fully aware. Because there are many things on that list and because there is teacher choice with pulling from that list, although they were selected to align thematically with the units, just thought maybe it would be an opportune time to just let everybody know that. But yes, they're, they would not be teaching everything on there. It was a selection of possibilities based on the, the themes and concepts that were in those units.
Yeah, very good. Because there is a number of movies I'm very impressed with. I use movies all the time to teach my kids lessons. I'll pause right in the middle of the movie, much to their annoyance, I'm sure, and say, listen, do you see what's happening here and you understand what the, the aspects of those characters' development are? So you have on there, They Live, The Social Dilemma, Wally, District Nine, Her, and The Matrix. I've seen all those movies. I love them. And I could go crazy writing a paper for those. So as long as the academic rigor is there, using that as input, I understand that and the dimensionality. I even said about The Matrix and the League Women Voters Meet the Candidates. If you look at it and ask yourself, is, is Agent Smith the one as opposed to Neo? That'll blow your mind and you have to re-watch the whole movie. Write a paper about that. So I think it's rigorous, if you make it that way. And having film as input is a very creative thing, especially in a world where there's a lot more video than writing. And that's going to happen more and more as the decades go on. So appreciate that. And then Voices Under Fire, I was impressed with the banned book list. There was just a lot of classics on there. And so that's, that's a very interesting topic as well. As far as the African-American literature, it did say systemic inequality at some point, but it also said systemic inequality in antebellum America, right? Which is kind of an easy thing to explain because that's when slavery was occurring. So the notion of systemic inequality is much more interesting between that era and, you know, the civil rights era and the civil rights to present, especially if you juxtapose systemic inequality with systemic racism. There's a big difference in those two terms, right? Because the challenge of racism is you can turn into witch hunting. So it's, James, you're racist. No, I'm not. Yes, you are. No, I'm not. And we're with kindergartners, right? Whereas inequality is a measurable thing. So I appreciate that it's about systemic inequality, but I find it interesting that it's about antebellum America, which is actually an easy argument to explain and elaborate on. That's different than arguing the notion of systemic inequality or systemic racism in the era from civil rights to now. But you had asked her about from some specifics. So I'd give you some specifics. I will say this, I'd be intrigued to have into, into this, you're saying, give me an example. Here's a list of, of black conservative authors and, and podcasters and so on. And I listen to these guys all the time. And I love listening to them because they are conservatives and they sound like conservatives. They are in fact, black conservatives. And I bring this up to say, as you're asking for some specific examples, I didn't find any of these authors either in this course or in the African-American Latino Studies course that, that we also offer. And the reason I bring this up is, just to be honest, right, statistically, statistically, 80% of academics are lean left, 85% of the black community leans left, 66% of the state of Connecticut leans left, and 80% of the voter registration in this town leans left. The probability that there's a left bias and, and that much weight on the left is high. And so one of the measures I look at, and I specifically look for these authors, and if there's a different set of black conservative authors you want to look at, I'm totally cool with that, but these are some of my favorites. I look at Glenn Lowry, love him. I look at Carol Swain, love him, right? Larry Elder, I put up with him. He's famous, but eh, he's just a lot of noise sometimes. But eh, I like him. Booker T. Washington, the best capitalist in, in American history. He and W. E. B. Du Bois used to fight about it all the time, left versus right. They didn't say it that way, but that's what it was. I would be curious to see some of these authors in some of the, the works, just throwing that out there as a possibility. Because my concern is, you know, there's a toolbox. There's only two sides of, of the political philosophy. I'm not even talking parties, I'm talking philosophical positions. And if you want to really find every possibility and say to the students, you know what, evaluate every possibility, I know that it's a minority position in this state and in this town and in certain groups, but these are black authors who have a very conservative view on things and might have a very different way of looking at it. So I'd love to see some of these in there. Did I miss them or other authors like that?
Well, Booker T. and we, we get deeply into the Booker T. Du Bois debate in African-American Latinx history as well as our US history course. So that's one, not to, not to critique your list, but that is one that I've been in the classroom last year especially. It's a multi-day debate that happens and investigation of their two positions in our, our black and Latinx course.
Yeah.
I appreciate the list. I'm very familiar. I grew up on these authors.
Yep.
My parents are very big fans and I'm aware of, of their work and their positions on things. I, I really don't think there would be a reason not to include some of these authors. So I appreciate the list.
Yeah, thank you. And if I could put a plug for Glenn Lowry, I'd love to see something from him in there. And then finally, just since we're here, I'd just like to finish my point and not talk anymore. Leaving Your Legacy, I liked that one too. I love all these courses. I was worried about it being very, frankly narcissistic, right? Because one of my beliefs, and shoot me if you want to, is that, that young people should absorb the world before they go out and think that they're better than everybody else, frankly, right? We should all use, have a lot of humility, but kids especially. And, and it's really easy to tell kids, you know, you can go change the world before you know how to do anything. And I think it's a really bad message. This doesn't do that. So I looked at this and it actually has a lot of rigor to it. Not only does it have a lot of rigor into it, but it actually talks about advocating things that you can change on the board. So I'd like to add that to the Inside Out list, which is to say, if the kids are actually going to be charged with figuring out how to make the schools better, can we have the teachers to select the best three or four and get them in here? Just as an idea.
I responded today, you know, I'd need Dr. Haiti's approval and the board's approval, but be happy to add that into the, within the curriculum in that last unit to say that there could be an opportunity for students to address the board, if you're open to that. Right now, the students that are piloting some of this course are actually, actually decided that after surveying the student body, so the first thing they did was conduct interviews as part of their research within the building. So they went into study halls and they started to conduct actual research one-on-one with students, peers in the building. They brought all of their ideas back to the class about what they thought some of the students' biggest concerns or, or, you know, ideas were for the building. And they actually coalesced around a single idea, I believe, that they all took an interest in. So currently, as they pilot some parts of this course, they are actually doing a collective project around one particular issue. I know one that came up was a question that students had about study halls and whether study halls could be academic study halls where they could get tutoring and extra help. So this was like, just to give an example, I think even just being here, being present for the dialogue with members of the banned community, that could be a potential building-wide, like issue or concern that students might bring up that could be part of the course. But right now, there is, they've coalesced around one collective issue. In the future, they may, if the course, proposed course passes, there may be multiple issues that come up where you could have three or four students present to the board. But currently, they have united around a single issue and they're all working on learning how to conduct different types of research about that and then disaggregate the data, analyze the data, and turn it into a written report. So, but yeah, I love the idea. I love when our students, you can see tonight, were fabulous, like advocate for themselves and come before the board and definitely makes us really proud when we see those kinds of skills that they have. And I know one young lady said she didn't have confidence, but she certainly did, coming before the board. So we would love that, as long as I have the green light from all of you. And Dr. Haiti would be happy to put a note in the curriculum itself that invites that at the end of the course for students to come and present before all of you.
Anybody want to say? I gotta go back with this. I gotta go back. Ms. Jacobson?
I just wanted to respond to the list of courses. The Film and Literature course, I thought was especially interesting and to my mind, having studied theater and literature in college, this is a college-level course. And I think it really meets the, the students where they're at. You're really engaging them and asking them to think critically. And I think all of these courses really ask our students to think critically. There are not predetermined conclusions here. You're asking them to evaluate. And I think, you know, to Mr. Panos's and Mr. Madison's point, you could absolutely include something by Clarence Thomas, you know, in, in that course and have, and have people look at that course and then ask, you know, the black, black voices are not a monolith. And so that's clearly something that could be interjected in there to get, to give a more well-rounded picture, possibly. But I just, I wanted to, I wanted to give you props because I think this is a great list of courses. And it's sad to think that the, the English Literature History course, the prior one, that's talking about Chaucer, I am not surprised that it's got.
Oh, The British Lit.
Yes. I'm not surprised that it has a low enrollment rate. I've read Chaucer, I, you know, a lot of us of a certain age have read all of these things and we could possibly appreciate them, but they're not, in this day and age, unfortunately, it's not terribly compelling. And I think these courses offer a great depth and breadth to interest kids. And I think, I think you should be applauded for that.
We could put Chaucer in the censorship course. I mean, there are a lot of reasons that we probably should not be delving too deeply into some of his work. But yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that feedback. I mean, do parents really realize what their kids are going to be reading if they read Chaucer? Shakespeare's, Shakespeare's another one.
Pretty raunchy.
It's, it's a little rough. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Ms. Davis.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here. I'm at a little bit of disadvantage coming in, just newly elected, trying to, thank you, trying to do some speed reading, pretty much what you would call cramming for tonight. The election was only, what, two weeks ago? So being on board and being privy to some of the things that are my, my former, not former, but re-elected members have been. I am just hoping, I'd like to share the sentiment that, as Mrs. Jacobson just mentioned, that when these courses are being presented, I can appreciate the historical perspective, but I'd really like, and I'm hoping, that the teachers that are presenting. but I'd really like, and I'm hoping that the teachers that are presenting these courses really provide a broad view, an encompassing view of authors', writers' perspectives. Because it's not just one side that there is in myself being a conservative and a Republican black female. Even though I don't like to describe myself that way, but just for context and purposes, there's always two sides. And I would hope that the teachers are offering that to our students, not to sway, but to offer. So that they can make decisions for themselves, you know, as they move forward. So, and I do appreciate the change, the classical literature, you know, it had its time and place. I think it shouldn't be lost. Let me just say that it shouldn't be lost because there's some critical thinking that's there. There are so many ways. The teacher that's presenting these courses is key to some of these, to the learning experience, you know, of the students. So I just wanna make sure that it's balanced across the board.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback.
Yes, that's my, you know, I'm hoping that when we review or we come back and take a look, that we can really see that there's some balance across the board. And I think that's what we all should be striving for.
I definitely respect that sentiment, thank you. And you're welcome to, board members are always welcome to come into the classrooms and see how these things are being taught. I don't know the exact process for that, but I know there's a little bit of a process, right? But that's, it's, we pretty much have an open door. So come on in and see what it looks like in actuality. And sometimes that can provide a context for the courses. We'd love to have you, anyone on the board. But I appreciate that. And don't worry, there's plenty of, like, the classic canon has not been completely thrown out the window. If you look at our other courses too, well, not just the Voices Under Fire course does have some, like as Mr. Madison said, what we maybe would consider pieces of, like, from the classic canon. Our other courses do too. I mean, especially our American Lit courses. It's basically like, if you think back to your high school experience, probably a lot of the books that you remember reading, Crucible, The Great Gatsby. So we read a lot of what we would consider those, like, quintessential, like, American authors that are the classics. So, but, and all of that curriculum, the maps and book lists are available online. So if you wanna take a look, but definitely appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Mr. Williston?
Yes. I just wanted to mention, as someone who's most recently been through WPS, Class of 2016, I can't stress, I alluded to it a little bit before, but I can't stress how much, well, I'll even add this. A lot of the teachers that taught while I was there are still in the building. And through my time from fifth grade right on through my senior year, I can't say that I felt led by any teacher. I believe every teacher has, especially in classes like history-based classes and civics-based classes and like English classes, where there's a lot of opportunity for that kind of discourse, I've never felt led by any teacher. And this is me as a young man who was grown up fairly conservative. My father is a Pentecostal bishop. I've been in the Word since a young man. And I've never felt at any one point that I went to school and like I was trying to be like brainwashed or overcome by teachers. If anything, I had an opportunity to display the worldview that I was given. And I was given free discourse to engage with my peers and my classmates. I don't imagine that the teachers that we vet when we're hiring will have any other kind of ethical code to them because they understand they're not here to do anything but develop the critical thinking and the analytical skills and to whichever child comes through their classroom. You know, I've sat in classrooms with classmates with differing views. I've had differing views. And I've always felt like my teachers, many of whom are still employed by WPS, gave us that space to have that discourse without judgment. And if there ever was judgment by another classmate, they always reminded us, like, "Hey, we're not here to judge. We're here to discourse. We're here to learn how to do persuasive writing. We're here to learn how to speak publicly and interact with each other" and honor their differing views.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions before we call it? Mr. Panos?
You know, I'll just say, you know, leaving your legacy course really sounds more like a course in teaching political activism. So you can, I suppose you can make, you can make a writing course out of anything, but you know, I would expect it to be more, you know, something, you know, dealing with literature, art literature. And it doesn't strike me as something for an academics and an English course. So I just don't understand why that's even being considered an English course, so.
Well, we pulled the Common Core standards around research as the main elements of the course. So the Common Core in English Language Arts is made up of multiple sort of facets. So there is the reading of information on literary texts, but there's also a large portion of those standards that relate to conducting, learning how to conduct research, writing, communicating, and language skills. So oral language skills and written language skills. So those were the standards that were prioritized in this course because it was our belief that, especially students who are entering four-year universities, they are going to be asked to conduct research. And we have, as, you know, from the data, we have a majority of our students are entering college. So it's really a course where they're getting some of those fundamental research skills that are embedded in the English Literature or English ELA portion of the Common Core. You can see the standards in there. We definitely didn't remove those or try to turn it into an English course when it's not. But we really made it a course that specializes in research, writing, and language usage, again, which are all in the Common Core under English and Language Arts. I mean, political activism, like I said, I think one of the main sort of building-wide issues that students were interested in looking into was the study hall, were the study halls. And trying to persuade administration that maybe the study halls should be more academic and have tutoring options and ways for students to get more specialized learning and support. I don't, that just happens to be what they have focused on. Again, like I said, I think the earlier information we got from the banned community, that could be a possible topic for youth participatory or action research, YPAR, in the building that could come out of it. It's not really about political issues going on in the building. It's about issues that intrigue students or they might feel are important ones that they wanna tackle and create an action plan for that they could even present to you or to Dr. Parker. Just, that's the information I can give you about that course.
So meeting the standards of the Common Core, whatever you refer to, you could do this for the items I said, just for social media. For example, the effects of social media. This is a very big topic today. It's full of all SEL implications. So you could make an entire course out of that.
I mean, maybe that is something, as we continue to survey students, they might say that that's a course that they would find important. We can. I mean, that's the nice thing about the Core is that it's not only scaffolded for rigor or cognitive demand, but it's somewhat malleable where you could have it fit with lots of different courses that are really specialized. So sure, we could. I mean, I don't know what the future holds for additional electives, but the possibility is there that there are other ones that students might identify as being important to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I, again, former curriculum chair, I was there when this was presented. It's one of those things, especially me coming through Windsor Public Schools, then going off and getting my education in English Literature. I know that a lot of these courses, to Ms. Jacobson's point, are college-level courses because I took them at Central Connecticut State University. And I did take film to literature. And it's just amazing to see the offerings. Again, our program of study continues to grow under the leadership of amazing educators. And the curriculum is there and the student buy-in is there. When they wanna see something, they advocate for it and we produce it. Amazing. So I am always happy to see new curriculum, expanded curricula. And this is just, again, another feather in Windsor's cap to continue to do this work and lead the charge, especially in literature for today. And I also love to see the research-based component because that's what college is. We're no longer just sitting and reading an entire text and then writing how we feel about it. Where there's dialogue, to Mr. Williston's point, and it started in Windsor Public Schools for me as well. So I always appreciated the banter in our ELA classes. And I'm glad to see that it continues today, not only with my daughter, who's in college now, but even with my son, who struggles the most in ELA, to see him really, you know, get into it. So awesome and kudos to the entire team. Thank you. So I believe we have a motion on the floor. And a second, a motion by Mr. Lockhart. And a second by Mr. Panos.
Did you wanna repeat it so that people...
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the agenda items HC5 through HC8 as described in tonight's agenda.
Are we gonna roll call this? Okay. All those in favor to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Seven, one, zero. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Dr. Haiti, I'll toss it back to you to start your superintendent's report.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Not yet. Okay.
All right. On Tuesday, October 28th, Windsor Public School hosted the Town of Windsor Program Citizens Academy at Windsor High School. We welcomed all participants. And each of our school principals gave an overview of the great things happening within their schools. The evening ended with a tour of the high school that left participants amazed at the resources and opportunities that we are providing our students at Windsor High School. Election Day was November 4th. Congratulations to our two new members and all our returning members. We, Windsor Public Schools, we had a professional learning day for our district staff. During our Windsor Nation Gathering, which is our semi-annual event where I get to set the direction and share expectations with my entire staff, I encouraged everyone to see the good within themselves and others. Together, we made a collective commitment to lead with kindness, both towards one another and towards our students as we worked to raise the next generation of kind-hearted individuals. I held two coffee talks this month. One was an evening session that was attended by many of our parents. And one was a morning session that was attended by many of our seniors at the Senior Center. I appreciated the perspective that seniors bring to our conversation. So I do want to publicly thank and acknowledge all our senior citizens that have taken the time to come out and shared their stories of, their success stories of Windsor Public Schools. On Wednesday, November 13th, we held our annual service award celebration, recognizing employees for 10 years of service and then every five years increment beyond the 10 years. We recognized over 70 district employees that were honored that evening. We were also very fortunate this year to honor Mr. Marvin Hatton from Sage Park Middle School that was honored for 40 years of service at Windsor Public School. I'm excited to announce that our board has been recognized by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAPE, for the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications for three different things. For the Windsor Public Schools, the Pulse Newsletter, for our Mobile Classroom Initiative, and for the District Instructional Core Wheel. The Board of Education was also recognized by, was the CAPE Level 2 Board of Distinction Award. So congratulations. My next coffee talk is scheduled for Tuesday, December 16th, from 10:00 to 11:00 in the Senior Center at LP Wilson. Please RSVP on the district website. And now I am going to take a moment to, I do wanna speak, I wish our students have stayed, but I'm so happy that this is being recorded. So I'm gonna speak directly to the camera because I will make sure that Mr. Monroe shares the recording with our students. I just wanna first start with, I want our students to know that I'm honoring their voices. I am very, very proud of all of them showing up and for advocating for themselves. That is something that we absolutely try to instill in every single Windsor Public School student. So I am very, very proud of the advocacy that I've seen today. I also want to, the reason I'm gonna make sure that Mr. Monroe shares this recording with our student is because one of our main instructional core aspect is creating students and raising students who are critical thinkers. And to be a critical thinker, you have to be able to look at issues from multiple angles and multiple perspectives. You have to be able to listen to all sides and do your own research in order to understand how decisions come to be. So I do wanna share, you know, I think part of the dilemma we're in is some miscommunication and lack of information. So I am going to do my best to share some information that will hopefully provide some insight to our families and our students. So I've heard a lot of questions coming in today to tonight's meeting as of, "Why now?" Right? This has been in existence for a long time. Why now? Because last year, it has come up as an issue, an equity issue when you're looking at class rank. So we had an issue with our class ranking last year. And when we looked at transcripts and started to analyze transcripts and credit, we saw that there was a discrepancy of an additional 0.4 credit that could potentially be taken twice a year. So that's a .8 per year. And some students are taking it for four years. So that's a total of 3.2 additional credit that is weighted in the GPA. So if they get an A, that's an additional 3.2 A weighted in the GPA. Just to put this in perspective, because I know not everybody's a math person, but pulling two random transcripts that are, have taken exactly same classes all along and have gotten the same grade all along, except one has taken banned and one has taken other electives. Let's say the GPA is 3.5 on both. Taking banned with additional 3.2 credit, with the As, will put the student in a banned course at a .06 advantage over the other student, giving it at least a 20-student gap in terms of rank. So even though two students have taken exactly the same classes, the student that have taken banned because they have an additional 3.2 weighted in their GPA, it has put them up 20 kids above the other student. And this is the issue that, this is the reason why we're here today because it was a rank issue between our number one and number two last year. So this did not come about because I don't appreciate what they do or I don't see the value of the program. This came about because it was an equity issue. Now, if we look at the Connecticut General Statute 10-2221A, specifically subsection F, it states, "For the purpose of this section, a credit shall consist of not less than the equivalent of a 40-minute class period for each school day of a school year." This statute establishes the minimum requirement for credits. Yes, we are, the board is able, and this is why we're here in front of the board, the board is able to put in place other measures such as creating a lab class, like our biology classes, our AP Biology, for example. There are two credits because they do one credit for the class and one credit for a lab. So there are other alternatives that we can look into. However, assigning a class that is, and we can, if we look at the program of study, you look under the music section, gospel choir, for example, it does state that participation in all concerts are mandatory and count as an assessment grade to... It does state that participation in all concerts are mandatory and count as an assessment grade towards a student grade. Other courses, under chamber choir, same thing. Jazz Ensemble and Symphonic Band are two courses that students are able to potentially take. And we do have a lot of our band students that take both courses together. So they end up with 2.8 credits for two classes. So when parents have spoken about like Brookfield, Brookfield, for example, I just looked it up. Brookfield only gives one credit for band. There are other school districts that do give two credits, but it's because they're taking two classes, which we do the same thing. So if our students are taking Jazz Ensemble and Symphonic Band, they could get two credits, but they're getting 2.8 credit. So there is a misunderstanding of what this exactly means. But we, what we have done, because I do realize that they do put an incredible amount of time outside of school, not to say that all other programs don't, maybe they don't put the same amount of hours. But if band puts in 100 hours and choir, let's say, puts in 50 hours, then to be equitable, we should be giving choir a point two if we're going to give band a point four. But this is exactly why there is a law that kind of governs how we do credits. Because now you look at students graduating from Connecticut high schools, all high schools across Connecticut are are giving one credit for one class that meets every other day for the entire year, but now we decide to give it a 1.4 because they do stuff outside. So that's where the inequity happens. So this is to address that section. Now, we have already, I've been in communication with Mr. Monroe and I don't know if he has shared that with his parents or not, but we have a task force that we're putting together to look at other alternatives. So to look at things that we can do within the law and some of the ideas that I, you know, I've been talking to a lot of superintendents and I can definitely tell you that every single district that is in our Hartford area do not give band students except the one credit. It's, there is nobody in the area, if you look at East Hartford, New Britain, some of the even bigger programs do not give students more than the one credit. However, they have other ways of making sure that they do provide that incentive so that students are still interested in joining the band and participating in the band. So we do have a task force. I will be very interested to to see who joins the task force. So Mr. Monroe is bringing some of the parents' leaders, some of his students, you know, I, you know, we have our principal, our director of school counseling, and we will be looking at different options. There is, the law allows us to offer half a credit that could only be taken once for community service. So that is another option. So students can take it. But we will have to put guidelines and the board is going to have to approve certain guidelines. Because if we allow, let's say, 50 hours of community service to be taken for that course, we're going to have to allow it for everybody. So if choir does 50 hours, if the warrior production does 50 hours outside of school, the drama team, the cheerleaders, public speaking, our debate team, it's connected to a public speaking course, we're going to have to look at all the courses that are connected to teams and programs outside of school hours and provide them with the same opportunities that we're providing our band students. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Panos, Ms. Adar, Mr. Madison.
Oh, does? Mr. Monroe marked students down for being absent. In other words, do they, does he lower their grades if they fail to show up for a practice or or an event which he said is required?
I do not know about the grade, but I can tell you that nobody has ever lost credit. So I don't know if that means that nobody has ever missed anything, but the .4 has been given to all students. So we've never taken away the .4 from any of the band students.
Is the grade, is the grade affected?
Well, if the grade is affected, that means they're not going to get an A. So they're not going to get that additional.
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't know what he does with the grade. I can't speak on his behalf, but I can speak on the credits.
Does the debate team, if someone doesn't show up for the debate, is the speaking, if they're taking public speaking, do they get grade, do they lose a grade?
So I can speak to courses, so for example choir, and here it does mention that participation is required. So I did speak to our choir director. If students do not show up to the concerts, if they have an excuse, then they are given an alternative assessment. If they don't have an excuse, then they lose the grade.
Okay, so then the choir, like they suggested, you know, you could, you probably should add something. Is there something else lesser that you can offer, for example, instead of 1.4, 1.2 and 1.1 for, you know, for choir or whatever it is, some, something, instead of being so much more? Did you consider that?
So that is a recommendation. And again, this is, so I have a legal, professional and ethical obligation to recommend to the board what is within the law and within, I advocate for all my 1,100-plus kids. It is up to the board to make these policies and these determinations, keeping in mind that we have to be equitable for all our students. So we're going to start giving out a point one for courses that we feel like kids are doing more. We're going to get ourselves, it has to be defined. We have to define the credit. Now, we're not talking about in the class or outside of class. That's fine. I am all for outside of class learning. However, we have to define what does that look like and how many hours does it take for us to say, okay, we're going to award a .25 or a .5?
Right, so you're expecting to do this with this committee? Is that what she's saying? Right now, are we saying, for going forward, it's simply going to be one credit? Is that, is that what we're putting into this, in the program of studies?
Right, for next year, yes.
For next year, okay.
With the understanding that after the task force meets, we come up with ideas. The ideas, if they require approval, board approval, which is if we add anything to the course of study, we're going to be back in front of you asking for your approval. But at that time, we're going to come with a course, a course description, requirements and guidelines so that anybody can sign up for the course.
Yes, so just because the the gentleman, and he has since left, did mention Brookfield. So I was, you know, looking as well because of my curiosity. And their base band program is Symphonic Band and Honors Band, you are correct, where there is one credit. However, they do have two courses, one for band, one for choir, that have a specific, this course will meet after school. And it's a .75 for jazz band, .5 for choir, and it has like a separate set of like criteria. And it says, "Credit earned in this course does not count toward fulfilling graduation requirements."
Yes.
So something like that, Mr. Panos, is potentially something I think we could look, we could look into. So then that kind of takes away the waiting issue because it's not towards graduation. But then they're still getting that, you know, it would be even more. It would be, you know, a .75 above for those who can commit to the after-school schedule, which it sounds like is pretty robust with Mr. Monroe, but then also potentially for your, your choir and strings as well. So that might be something that we can do that keeps us within our legal requirements, but is also continuing to acknowledge the work that the students are doing after school. So I think there are, it's, it's the waiting piece. I think that is the concern from a legal perspective. But then we want to make sure that obviously we're doing right, you know, by the community because we love having the band out there. So I think just what we need to rally around is the fact that that base core, that base course, legally, we have to keep it at at one, but it doesn't mean that we can't supplement.
And I also want to make sure all of you understand that there are courses that are on a pass or fail scale. These are not weighted into the GPA. So that is another option. It could be an additional course. It looks good on their transcript. It could follow the sequence of, you know, what, like a level two jazz ensemble. But it could be a pass fail course where it does not have an impact on the GPA. You cannot use the same, so for example, Algebra One. I love math, right? I can't take Algebra One twice and get A every time and use that towards my GPA. So what we're doing here is basically that. We're taking Jazz Ensemble and Symphonic Band twice every year for four years and is going towards our GPA.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Yeah, question. So how is this not analogous to homework? So for example, my, my son just took the guitar class, it's where you can make your own guitar. Zero homework because you just don't have the machines outside the shop. Okay, cool. He's also taken AP Bio. Insane amount of homework. That book is literally that thick, right? And so, you know, AP Bio has a requirement for work outside the class in the sense that if you don't do it, you're not going to pass the class and let alone pass the AP exam. So you might put in as an AP Bio student, dozens, hundreds, whatever, hours, I don't know, an insane amount of hours. Nobody sees it. All right, let's talk about the community value a second. I agree with that notion too. But how is this not just, yeah, a lot of classes generate a lot of work outside the classroom?
So, and and that is the argument that when I spoke to, like, you know, our choir director, it is expectation, it is that it's part of your grade. We do understand that because it is outside the school, things happen and parents can say, you know, like they have different commitments and that's why alternative assessments are in place. However, I don't think we've ever had an issue with students just not showing up because it's an after-school concert. It's just, it's, it is part of the expectation that if you are going to make the commitment to be in the band or in choir, you do know that it will require outside time, which, like you said, other courses do require outside time. But I, I kind of, I see their point. I see the, you know, the, because they do a lot for the community outside of Windsor Public Schools, that's why, you know, I, the first thing I told Mr. Monroe, there are other options. You know, other districts are giving like varsity letters, you know, to their students who are in the band. So there are a lot of other options that does not factor into the GPA and your class rank.
Mr. Panos?
However, band is a normal class, right? This is, in other words, if you take band as opposed to debate or let's say, the robotics team, one, you know, one is a club, let's say, or say, you'll take football.
So students will argue with you. So we have students who are in computer science and all our computer science students are, you know, that's what they love. So they are in also robotics. So it's, it's, again, my position, I have to advocate for kids who don't have a voice to advocate for themselves and for parents who don't know differently, right? So I am advocating for every student that does spend an incredible amount of time outside of the classroom doing things. I think they should also be, if we are going to, you know, award that, then they should also be awarded. We have PE, ninth and 10th grade PE, the first quarter is swimming. Most of our kids who are on the swim team, when they are in ninth grade and 10th grade, they are in swimming in PE. We don't give extra credit for PE because they swim every day after school for two, three hours and then they go to meets for like five, four hours. Like, we don't do that. So there is an argument that every single student who's involved in after-school activity can make. And my job is to make it for them.
But there, okay, PE, but but football is not PE.
But I didn't say football. I said swimming because PE, ninth grade PE is swimming. It is a course. It's required.
Oh, I see. So, okay, so, but are they required to be, are they required to engage in swim meets? You're saying?
If they are in the swim team, they are, yes.
Right, it's not part of the class.
It's not part of the, oh, but, well, why are they required? If it's not part of the class, why are they required to participate?
They're not required. I'm saying if they are, if they are part of the swim team. So my son swims. He, he chose to swim, right? But he also is in a PE class that is swimming.
Okay.
So he.
He gets credit for, for being in the class.
Right.
But not, not in the club.
Right, so why not give him credit? Because he also swims for hours after school.
Because he's not required. He doesn't get, he doesn't get a grade for, he doesn't get a grade for what he does on his own.
So that's the argument that we're making, is do, they get a grade, choir gets a grade, but they don't get the additional credit. It's part of their grade. So if they don't attend, the teacher is responsible to give an alternative assessment. Because we cannot legally, we cannot, you know, if any of those band parents decide that they just cannot make it to the after-school practice, we cannot say, okay, well, you're not coming to after-school practice, you're going to fail the class. We're going to have to provide, if they have an excuse, we have to provide an alternative assessment. That is our legal obligation. So this is the argument. So if if they can't attend, what are we doing about it? They're still getting the credit. I've been to some games, some, it's not, not every single band person attends, member attends every single event, every single game. Things happen and people cannot attend. There was just recently an away game that the band did not attend. We did not take away a .025 of their credit because they didn't go to that game.
I'm not referring to the credit. I'm referring to the grade. In other words, someone says you're required to be there. Okay, now, the typical way, if you don't show up for class or something like that and it's essential that you be there, you know, you can be marked down. This is what we say. You will, in other words, instead of getting an A+, you're going to get an A. That's all I'm saying. Now, if that happens in these other classes, then you have an argument. But if you're just talking about someone taking up and taking off, you know, going to a club that's, it's somehow related somewhat to a course, you know, like robotics or something like this, then, then, you know, the club is separate. It's not part of, you know, if you, if you don't show up for the, for the, the after-school thing, the, the club, then it does not affect your grade. Some, nobody says you have to be there. The only, you know.
So what about the classes that you have to be there? So what do we do with the classes that they have to be there, like choir?
Well, we, we don't, right, okay, I see. All right. Well, you're right. That's true. There's choir. So, so like you say, there should be some sort of extra credit given to that if it's that much more.
That's exactly what I'm just trying to say, is that it's level set, everybody, it's one credit. If the class meets every day, it's one. If the class meets for just the semester is half, just like every other class that we have in our program of study. And then create additional opportunities. We can create a seminar class. We can create a community service class. We can put additional opportunities so that, but we have to have guidelines so that kids can sign up for.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, my question is regarding the community service course. So that can only be taken one time ever?
It's one time towards graduation. It only can count twice towards, I mean, it can only count once towards graduation.
All right, so this is just, I don't know, maybe I'm trying to find some wiggle room here because there are students who are doing, that are participating in those groups every year. Would it be possible to do like a one, two, three, four, like for a community service course for those students that are participating in it every year?
So the law is very clear, and I think Mr. Panos had quoted that in one of the email. It's very clear that it can only be used towards graduation only one time for half a credit.
Any other discussion?
So just for clarity, the difference now would be if a band student were to take band four times, instead of getting that 1.6 credits over the four years, they would be able to get .5 credit?
No, so if they take band?
Yeah.
One, one band or both bands?
Just one, because it's .4 a year. Is it point? No, I'm talking about the extra credit.
The extra, the extra is .4.
Yeah.
So that would be the additional 1.6.
And instead of that, it would be an additional 1.5 with the, if we do the community service route?
It would just be an additional .5 towards graduation.
Okay.
We can add other courses that are pass or fail. So they don't count towards graduation. They don't, are not weighted.
And and I'm just trying to, how would that, yeah, how would that benefit them? And, and I'm just trying to, um, how would that, yeah, how would that benefit them?
So depending on the course name, we can be creative. It can, it looks good on their resume. It's, they're still, it's still gonna have a description. So the course at, is, um, freshman level could be, I don't know, like fifty hours of practice supervised by a teacher because, uh, Mr. Monroe is the band director, he does get, you know, an additional stipend to work outside of the school day. So he would still be supervising students and helping student, it would be like a, a learning experience.
Like a study hall, almost? Like, like a study hall but with like a title?
Yes, basically. That takes place outside of the school day.
Ms. Zader and then Ms. Davis.
Yep. So just gonna reiterate, and, and for the parents and for the students, I just want to be clear kind of what, what I'm thinking could potentially be a recommendation because I know I'm hearing like community service credits. I think as part of the curriculum, something that we could potentially look at again is having that core band class, right, that has the one credit. Um, and then there would be like certain requirements, right? So like the Fall Pep Rally, this, this, this for the core. And then creation of a separate potential class, um, that would be, again, the caveat that it is pass or fail, not a graded class, pass, fail, worth a certain amount of credits, and the course will meet after school. And then you get, for those that like really are jazzed and love doing the band and, and all of the being out in the community and all of the, um, additional, uh, opportunities that Mr. Monroe really loves to give everyone, or for choir too, all of the amazing opportunities that our choir gets, there's a chance to sign up for that class. It is considered after-school, pass or fail for extra, for an extra like credit, but it doesn't go towards the GPA. So they're getting the credit, but it's not impacting their standing at the end of the year.
So would this be like a sort of situation where it affects your, like your unweighted GPA but not your weighted GPA, or is that not?
So pass and fail don't, like it doesn't go into the GPA now?
Thank you. So I know we're trying to create solutions on the spot and I know you mentioned that there is a task force that's being formulated and to, um, the chairs, um, and also I believe Mr. Lockhart. Timing for parents is, and the students is of the essence. They would like to know what's going to happen. I'm just thinking one of the first things need to do is that law, the law needs to be, um, specified. You know, the, the kids, they need to know what that law is. I know it seems a lot, but I think if they understand that and what we're required to do may help. It might not be satisfactory, but if they understand what our parameters are. How can we get a solution faster? What's the, do you have a timeline for the task force? When should they be meeting or it, has that been even?
So the dates have been set. Um, we're gonna meet in December and in January. We are gonna come up with, so this is not gonna take effect until next year. I just want to make sure that this is not gonna affect any of our students this year. So once we come up with some ideas, um, then we will have to come back to the board meeting. Probably is gonna be in February or March. Um, the board is gonna have to approve additions to the program of study if that's the route we're going to. Um, and then students are gonna be able to add it to their, um, schedules for next year.
Yeah.
If that is the solution we go with.
Yeah, so the solution has to be something really spectacular, I think, for the students. That's equivalent to the point four, you know, something that's meaningful to them. You know, whatever the solution is, because it just seems right now we're bound to this one credit and the multiple times that you're taking the course and what can count towards graduation, if I understand correctly. Because you did a great job explaining.
Thank you.
You know, what our parameters are and what we're confined to. That's, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
One point clarity, you had mentioned you can't require students to show up for an outside of school event, you said, by, by law, correct?
Right, if they can't, like, you, you don't really have a, you know, it's, I mean, you can't penalize them, let me put it this way, with their, their grades in school if you're not gonna give an alternative. So like when kids, think about it, when kids are, are absent during the school day, we have to, and they're sick, let's say they're sick, they can't come to school. We provide an assess, an alternative assessment. They ha, they have the chance to make up the assessment. We cannot penalize kids for not showing up after school using their grades.
Is that how it works now for the one point four? What you just said?
What do you mean?
I get what you're saying, but is that how it works now?
Well, so that goes back to how Mr. Monroe chooses to grade students. I don't know what he does if he penalizes students that do not show up to events or not. I really, I wish he stayed, but I don't know.
Can you gi, give us?
Yes, I can definitely, I can ask him.
Send us the, what it is, yeah.
I'm gonna wrap this up. Um, in the interest of time, and we have a student here and it is late. So I'm just gonna wrap this up real cute in a bow. So, um, if I could, um, uh, uh, Dr. Haiti, if you could, um, if I could assign our, whomever I put as the board liaison to the high school on the task force, uh, that would be great? Okay, thank you so much. So we're just gonna, uh, close it up. I know we did some movements of the agenda, but I'm, I, I need a motion to move this chat, the students. Uh, cause I ain't gonna hold you, but we held you. Um, so-
Move that we move Agenda Item Six, Student Representative Report, to come directly after Audience to Visitors.
Thank you. So there's a motion by Mr. Lockhart, second by, uh, who is it? Oh, Becky Jacobson, awesome. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. So let's go on ahead and toss it over to Brooklyn Smart. Thank you.
I know y'all been waiting for me to speak. I know. I love the, I love the, I love the applause. I love it. You guys are so eager.
I, I think, I think she needs a point four credit.
I was gonna ask her. I would greatly appreciate-
Are you getting a point four?
I would greatly appreciate that.
I write out, is he?
Listen, maybe you can even talk to colleges, see if they can lower my application fees. I would greatly appreciate that.
I got a recommendation for letter for you.
Please, please, please. I agree with that. Um, okay, I have a little thing, a little, little bit. Um, so a few weeks ago, WFSB joined us for coverage of our annual Fall Pep Rally and our homecoming football game as we were featured on Great Day Game Day for Game of the Week. Channel Three reporters were extremely impressed with both the energy and the organization of the events. The pep rally highlighted and showcased our student spirit, teamwork, and warrior pride. And our excitement carried right into the game itself, which we won sixty-four zero against Simsbury High School. The coverage reflected exceptionally well on our school community and we are grateful for the positive attention and support. Huge shout out to Brandon Monroe representing the exceptional marching band. Dr. White representing, representing the choir and Mr. Gooden for the TV production crew, live streaming and covering everything with the Dub Hub. And most importantly, Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Kara Han and all of the Windsor High School athletic teams for helping to carry a great pep rally. And I was emcee myself, so shout out to me. This week, we've had highly productive student meetings and class observations with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, formerly known as the NIASK. These visits have been positive, collaborative, and reflective of the strong work happening across our school community. The team gave encouraging feedback, noting our school's engagement, organization, and commitment to continual improvement. Last week, we also released our High Honors and Honors list for grades nine through twelve, so please be sure to check that out. Oh, 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 I was on it, by the way. And on wrapping this up, this Saturday, November twenty-second at one PM at Jack O'Brien Stadium, we are having our Bloomfield versus Windsor game, which is also our senior day. So please come out to support our Windsor Warriors, our seniors, as they complete their last high school season and cheer on our Warriors because we are going to beat the Warhawks. So yes, that's all I got.
Any questions for Ms. Smart? Anyone? Ms. Jacobson, then Mr. Lockhart? No?
I just wanna say thank you so much for hanging in there. I know this was a long meeting and you have stayed with us this whole time and been making notes and I just appreciate your attentiveness.
Of course, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Regarding the Bloomfield-Windsor game, uh, I, I'm positive we're gonna blow them away.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
You guarantee that, right?
Oh, for sure. I'm very composite, I'm very confident in all of my friends.
Ms. Taylor was, and it was the other way around.
Wait, really?
When she was in high school, it was the other way. When we'd have these things, we would get blown away.
It ebbs and it flows, okay?
So-
Is there any sports betting going on?
Yeah, no, there actually, there is. But I'm actually very confident in our Warriors. We have had a great season. We only had one loss. We were just having a really off day, but we were able to bounce back. I think we're ranked number eight in the state right now. That loss did drop our ranking just a little bit. But I know that Fleet, Torrico, um, Diligence, they have been doing an awesome job with the boys, especially in film and study halls and things like that. So I am a hundred and ten percent confident that we will, that we will beat these Warhawks in football and in basketball as well.
Oh, I love this. I love the confidence.
Listen, that game is going to be packed and it's an annual thing, so it's like, we, we have, we have to win. This rivalry has been going on for years.
Going on for decades, yes.
Years.
Decades. Um, uh, thank you so much. I'm so sorry we held you, but you are the consummate professional and, um, I, I just love your reports and, and thank you so, so much. But I want you to go right this very second so that you can, that you can get rest for the next day.
Thankfully have privileges tomorrow. My last, my last question is, will I actually be getting graduation credits for this? I greatly appreciate it.
We're gonna toss that to the task force. Thank you, proud Auntie Moe. Okay. Awesome, awesome, awesome. So we are back on, I'm sorry.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the agenda, as far as consent agenda?
Yes, anything need to be pulled, folks, from the consent agenda?
Madam President, move the Board of Education to approve Consent Agenda Items Four A, Financial Report, Four B, Enrollment Report, Four C, Food Service Report, Four D, Human Resources Report, and the appointment of the representative to the Town of Windsor Insurance Commission.
A second motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe the ayes have it. The motion carries eight, zero, zero. Okay, and now we have, uh, the approval of minutes.
Um, I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and the November tenth, twenty-twenty-five organizational special meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Zader, second by Mr. Panos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. The motion carries eight, zero, zero.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before you begin your report, are you, would a motion be in order to extend the meeting seeing that ten-thirty is around the corner and we still have the agenda?
Phew, yep.
Is, um, Mr. Panos, are you a minimum to, um, eleven o'clock?
Yes, I can. Let's see, are you ready to drink?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education extends its meeting in time from ten-thirty to eleven PM.
Second.
Okay, motion to extend the meeting by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries eight, zero, zero. We continue, um, we'll extend the meeting until eleven PM. Here we go. All right. All right, into my report. Wow, first time, okay. I'm excited, uh, that we participated as a board, um, in the NIASK, um, accreditation for Windsor High School, um, along with Mr. Panos and Mr. Williston, who accompanied me on, um, on a meeting on a Sunday afternoon. So thank you very much for your time. You don't get point four. But you do get a thank you and a smile from me because you didn't have to do it. It was a great, uh, meeting, uh, with the committee. It was about ten or eleven folks on and, uh, we spoke to, um, the committee, uh, all about, uh, Windsor High School, our, uh, our board, uh, affiliation with, um, with the school. And I think we did a great job representing the, the board very well. Um, so that was a great, um, experience. Uh, I believe that was your first time, Mr. Williston, right? Yeah, okay, great. I also attended the Annual Service Awards, uh, with, uh, Mr. Panos and Mr. Williston again. Uh, we attended with, uh, the mayor was there, the deputy mayor was there, and our, uh, board past president, David Fury, was also in attendance. Um, it was great to see the dedication, um, of our, um, our individuals that work for the district. I mean, from ten, uh, years of service all the way up to forty years of service. Um, it was really great to see folks still excited about working in the district and, um, and it was a great energy. And the band was there playing. It was great. Um, congratulations to all. Um, thank you for all that you do. It was a great time. We ha, held our board retreat, uh, Saturday, November fifteenth. It was fantastic. It was a great full day of learning and development. Thank you to Dr. Haiti and your team, pulling out all the stops for us, uh, to be here bright and early on a Saturday. Again, just working away. And it was great. Uh, the, the board was there. Uh, Mr. Lockhart, uh, zoomed in from Alaska. So that's the dedication on this board. Uh, but it was really, really great to, to spend time and, and work on all the things that we were gonna get excited for and continue to be excited for, for the planning, for the strategic planning for the district. So it was great. Um, CAE Conference is coming up at the end of this week. I'm excited for our new members who will be able to attend for the first time as well. Uh, the mobile classroom, I was told, is coming on down, which is great. Our, our, our fun, uh, fun on wheels. And congratulations, uh, to our own, uh, Vice President Lockhart, who complete, will be completing his term as CAE President. So that'd be fun to go out with a big ol' bang, huh, Leonard? So great. Lastly, I, I wanna lift the name of, uh, Mr. Lawrence Shea, who retired after twenty-six years as principal of Windsor High School in nineteen ninety-nine, the year I graduated and the year Ms. Smart's mom graduated. We graduate together in the year your son graduated. He wrapped everything up in nineteen ninety-nine. I was actually the last person to interview him. Uh, I had a seminar class of being co-editor of our paper at the time, The Tomahawk. And I interviewed him for the last time to, you know, see all the things that he wanted to do in retirement and, and he's been a, around for a long time. He retired, um, up, uh, out of, New Hampshire it was, yes. Um, but he has passed on. Um, so I, I want to dedicate tonight's meeting, my first, which is such a full, uh, circle moment, um, as board president, to him. Mr. Shea, well done. Um, you're awesome. And, and I just wanna give my condolences to his family. And that completes my report. Any questions? Okay. All right, so I'm gonna move on to ask for Mr. Lockhart to, that has a motion for committee and liaison assignments.
I'm sorry? No, no, we, we did eight C and we just did eight C, so when we go back, we have to go do eight A and eight B and eight D.
Correct.
All right?
Yep.
So there's, there's several motions. First motion, move the Executive Committee, a committee of three, continue its work. What do you wanna do?
Just a, a correction here. The Executive Committee is-
Is already in the bylaw, that's correct.
Doesn't need that, we don't need that.
Okay, it's sitting here, but, okay. Next motion, move the Finance Committee, a committee of the whole, continue its work.
A second motion.
Should we, should we do it after every single one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the motion carries eight, zero, zero.
Move the Policy Committee, a committee of three, continue its work with the president as ex officio.
Second motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstention, motion carries eight, zero, zero.
Move the Curriculum Committee, a committee of three, continue its work with the president as ex officio.
A second motion.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions, motion carries eight, zero, zero.
Move the Long Range Planning Committee, a committee of three, continue its work with the president as ex officio.
A second motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries eight, zero, zero.
Move that the joint B O E Town Council Committee, a committee of three B O E members and three town council members, continue its work and participate at the calling of the mayor and/or the board president.
A second motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions, motion carries eight, zero, zero. So, so I, I want to just announce the members, uh, we know who the members of the executive committee are. Uh, myself as president, uh, vice president, uh, Mr. Lockhart, and minority leader, Mr. Panos per our bylaws. Um, for, uh, the finance, uh, committee, um, appointing Leonard Lockhart to chair that committee. The, the membership is comprised of the committee of the whole. Um, for the chair of policy committee, Nathan Williston, membership is James Madison and Leonard Lockhart. Myself as ex officio. Um, I appoint Becky Jacobson as chair of curriculum committee, membership is Maxine Davis and Nathan Williston. Myself as ex officio. Um, appointing Tracy Zotter as chair of long-range planning committee, membership is Jeremy Halleck and Leonard Lockhart. Myself as ex officio. And I am appointing Leonard Lockhart, Tracy Zotter, and James Madison as Board of Education representatives to the joint B O E Town Council Committee. Myself as ex officio. Oh, and the board, uh, I'm gonna appoint the school liaisons, my apologies. Windsor High School, Becky, uh, Jacobson and, um, Nathan Williston. Sage Park Middle School is, uh, Tracy Zotter and Paul Panos, minority leader Panos and Secretary Zotter. Clover Street School is, uh, rep- uh, Vice President, uh, Leonard Lockhart. J F K, John F. Kennedy School is, um, James, uh, Mr. James Madison. Oliver Ellsworth is, uh, Ms., uh, Maxine Davis. Anne Spakwannick is Mr. Jeremy Halleck. Okay, so, um, for. Why are we really needed to put the town council on? Okay. Is that Tracy? Yeah, that's Tracy. That's Tracy, right? Yes, so, uh, appoint the following liaisons to the town council. It's, uh, uh, Ms. Tracy Zotter, and backup is Nathan Williston. Youth commission is, uh, Becky Jacobson. And, uh, correct, is, uh, capital region educational, education council is Vice President Lockhart. And I appoint Vice President Lockhart as the Board of Education parliamentarian. Did you get all that, Robyn? Cause I have it in an email. Awesome, so we're, are we moving back? We move the.
Go to eight.
We have to go to eight A.
She has to do her report now.
She already did the.
You already did your report?
Yes. She did that, yeah.
Um, yes, move the Board of Education accept for a first reading the budget assumptions for fiscal year twenty, twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. All those in favor?
Um.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to this, um, this, um, I mean, Dr. Haiti? The budget assumptions?
If we can add, if you guys have any questions?
Yep, I, only thing I wanted to add is, um, I, I have not done anything with the budget assumption since we got elected, until we got the committees constituted. So, um, I really don't have anything to report on this, this evening. Um, if there's any concerns about the budget assumptions, I ask that you send it to me in, in the body of an email. Copy, um, copy, uh, Madam President, and copy Dr. Haiti, and Dr. Haiti as well. And we will address it, want it to address, and then Dr. Haiti, in her typical fashion, will send it to the entire board.
Yeah.
With the response. That's all I got.
So who are you, are you gonna? Do you wanna, yeah, vote?
Yeah, we go to, if there's no question, yeah, go to a vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries eight, zero, zero.
All right, next motion is move the Board of Education approve the proposed changes to the Windsor High School twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven program of studies as a second reading.
Second motion.
Motion on the floor for, uh, by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. Um. Becky?
Um, any questions? I think we've exhausted the. I don't have anything else to report on the band credit, but we can an, we can answer any other questions.
All right. So, um, ma- may I, since I, since I start the motion, so, um, thank you for the clarity. Um, Dr. Haiti, you've provided on this topic. Um, it's been a lot of, um, town feedback on this particular topic. Um, I, I thank you for bringing the piece about the, um, the state statue. I thank you about, um, speaking for all of the entities, um, that you're trying to create that equitable peace. Um, I, I, I did sense very strongly your, your empathy for everyone involved, both the staff and the students. Um, I am fully supportive of the task force solution that you're bringing forth. Um, I, I do believe that we, you know, we can approve this as is for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year, with the understanding that the task force is gonna be coming before this board sometime in the near future, with the understanding that us passing this will mean that we're gonna be revisiting this, and we may have to make some, um, edits, or some, some addendums, um, amendments to the document as currently presented right now. And, um, we're looking forward as a collective group, um, for that task force report, and that the new board liaisons to Windsor High School is gonna be our eyes and ears on the ground as that process goes along.
I agree with that, okay. So we have a motion on the floor. If there's no other discussion about the program, okay, Mr. Panos?
Uh, the only, the only other item is just the potential removal of the British Lit course. And, um, you know, I don't think that's a good idea. Uh, I think probably you should just give some alternatives. I don't know what the story is, or why it's not, uh, uh, interesting, you know, could probably change around some of the courses that you have. Uh, say, maybe you don't take up Shasir, but you take up such, um, you know, others like, uh, Thomas Hardy, uh, Rudyard Kipling, Joseph Conrad, or something else, and some, uh, uh, make it more interesting. I mean, this is, these are, these are some of the greatest offers of, of all time, so dropping it doesn't sound like a good idea. Um, you know, obviously, if you, uh, offer other electives that are, that are much easier to do, then obviously, they, they, a lot of the kids are gonna move to something else, but, um, uh, so, you know, are you, do you think that this is, this can be maintained? You, you really don't wanna? I mean, what alternative courses did they have that, that they couldn't, they couldn't choose this, or that you didn't have any?
It wasn't that they couldn't, it's that they weren't. So we went back, um, Mrs. Fudge and I, as well as Erica Fangiulo, who does our scheduling, we went back in and looked at which courses have actually been running. Um, we actually started with a, a three-year sort of window, so what, which courses did we have that have not run? There has not been enough student interest in three years. Um, and we did look at, um, deleting those from the program of studies in some cases. This is a course that we haven't run in ten years. We haven't had interest in ten years to run the course. It's been, I, this is my thirteenth year. Um, it was in the program, um, when I first started here. And, um, it, we know it has not run for at least ten years. It maybe hasn't run for longer than that. Um, so it's not the only course that we eliminated, just sort of clean up the program and have it be as accurate as possible, and really reflect the courses that have been running and will be running. Um, that was the reason for removal. It's not, I, I mean, I was a literature major, master's degree in literature as well. I definitely appreciate all these authors. It's nothing around that. It's just, we have courses in the program that just aren't running. It's just student interest. It's, it's been at least ten years since we've had enough interest to run the course.
Right, but you, you must have added a number of other electives for them, because they have to choose elects, electives anyway, right? So there must be a lot of alternatives that they prefer to.
Yeah, up until to- tonight. Um, so again, I've been here thirteen years. The, the electives that we, um, we put forward were more than ten years ago, and those have stayed in place. So those electives were the previous black literature course, um, young adult literature, um, public speaking, drama, journalism, um, fantasy and sci-fi, um, just going off. That's, uh, socialist. So those mostly are the ones that we were offering, um.
The journalism course wasn't there twenty years ago?
No, I'm saying, like, those, when we fir- when, when I first got here and British literature was available, that, these were the other electives that were available at the time, and have been available till now, cause you just passed new ones. So I thought you had asked which other electives were, those are the other ones.
What other elect, that's what, that was my question.
Yeah, I just named them.
They were all, and, and so they just dropped interest in it, all of a sudden dropped. There was no interest in it.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't really have, I didn't, I didn't dig too deeply into it when I was the chair, and I honestly haven't, I just haven't dug any deeper than just looking at, we looked at just the student requests, um, for, for that course, which, um, were definitely in the single digits, might have been fewer than six students. And then we can't run a course with five or six students in it usually, so, um, I've been working on, um, with, with Dana, with Erica, and some other folks, Katrina, trying to clean up what's in the program and also what's on the website, so that it really reflects what we're offering. And this was one of the courses, I mean, we eliminated some other courses that came up in the program that, um, had similar, similar stats. Um, and this one actually has probably been the, I mean, it's been in there for double-digit years and has not been running. I, I don't know, I don't have a, I don't have a, an explanation really as to why that is, other than students haven't been requesting it. They haven't been registering for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the motion on the floor about the program of studies for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? Okay, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, back on schedule to eight D, uh, the policy adoption for a second reading, um. Mr. Williston?
Yes, um, so as you know. Oh, sorry, lead with the motion. I don't, oh, sorry. Move the Board of Education approve the revised policy three, five, four, two, point, four, three meal charging, approving the policy for immediate use and distribution.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Williston, uh, second by Mr. Panos. Mr. Williston?
Um, yeah, so I'll just read the rationale for revised policy. Um, state law requires stu- schools to include in, any policy or procedure concerning the collection of unpaid charges for school lunches, breakfasts, sorry, breakfast, or other such meal, certain statutory elements. This new policy addresses the state statutory requirements and includes the requirement of the U.S. Department of Agri- Agriculture's Food and Nutrition Services child nutrition programs. We encourage schools to review any existing policies or procedures on this topic, even those not formally adopted by the school's board before adopting this new policy, to ensure internal consistency and compliance with state and federal requirements. Um, it does look like there's been a little bit of change here, right? From the first reading? No, it's the same, it reads the same way? Well, I just, I mean.
It's, uh, it reads the same.
Okay. So I mean, do you have, uh, any other further update? I don't think so, right? So I mean, is there any discussion on this?
I don't think so. Sounds like a good idea, so, nothing else you can do about it, but, it, we're, you know, the, the state kinda, uh, I don't know, it's, it kinda ties our hands, I guess, but I, I think your, your proposal here, or, you know, that you make, uh, is the best we can do, is force people to spend. I don't know what else you do under these circumstances. This sounds like a, sounds like a, for the legislative, but it sounds to me like, you know, we, we could find somebody with influence at CAE and, uh, see if we can convince, convince this, the, uh, the lobbyists and all this, uh, these important people here to, to, you know, stop handing down, you know, edicts from the legislature, if you may, that's my only comment.
Um, I mean, I guess if there's no other questions, I'll ask a question. So, um, I just wanna know what, like, what, what do you guys think it would look like as far as, um, like, how this applies? Because, I mean, the language reads may be restricted. So, I mean, there's no guarantee that just because a student is, um, delinquent, they won't be able to obtain that opportunity. So, I mean, how do you guys think that you'll be going about that?
Well, and I think this is where, in a policy, where you can kinda leave it a little gray, because everybody's situation is different. And, um, we're people, we're dealing with humans, so we, we, we do use discretion. Um, you know, if, if a family is able to show proof that they, they, they don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but at the same time, they are having a hardship, um, and they have a plan in place, payment pla- like, there are different situations where we, we cannot, it, it's not black and white. And I think this is where the spirit of the policy is, those who can pay, we're gonna make sure they pay. But we do understand that there are some people who might not be able to pay, and we, we will work with them.
Well, I wanted to say previously, a genuine concern of mine was like, if someone was not able to pay, but then maybe they had like an uncle, or a cousin, or a brother, or maybe even like a school member that was, or a member of the community that was willing to pay for that field trip. I was afraid like, something like this would be a barrier in between them accessing that active goodwill from another community member.
So, we, we, so, we do have an option for, um, if any community member wants to pay towards somebody's specific debt, or just in general. So we have that as an option, and we've actually been getting, um, donations towards.
Sorry, I meant in regards to like, someone not being able to afford a field trip, but they have debt already, like, what if? I, I guess one of my previous was concerns was if someone wanted to go on a field trip, but they had meal debt that would prohibit them from going on the field trip, and somebody else was willing to pay for the field trip for them. I guess that was kind of a concern of mine, but you sound like you would be understanding of everybody's situation.
The gray area.
That's a gray area.
Still there.
And, and that's where we would expect, like, if, if they can pay for a five hundred dollar field trip. They, they, it should go towards the debt, and then we can have a conversation about how can we support maybe half of the field trip? Or, like, that's, that's where the gray comes, depending on every family situation. Um, our schools do an amazing job. They know our families. Our families have a connection with our school personnel, so we're.
That's respectable, that's respectable.
I just have my.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, so there's a portion in here that mentioned referrals. Uh, let me just read it. It says, um, "In the event a student's unpaid meal charges are equal to or more than the cost of a thirty meals, a parent or guardians of such student will be referred to the district's homeless education liaison." Prior to all of that, letters are being sent. How strict are we in following up with every single step? Cause it appears there's step one, step two, step three.
We are, and I'll have Ms. Batchelder explain the steps.
Yeah, so this is, um, the majority, this entire policy is state law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, besides the, the section that we're trying to add, um, in. So, yes, we absolutely do every single, um, point, um, to try. So yes, we absolutely do every single point to try to recoup that money. And we also, after that 30 meal maximum, we refer them to the school liaison, but we also are able to call DCF too because again, it goes to neglect of a student. So whether DCF picks it up or not is another story, but we go that, we go to those measures in order to, you know, recoup the debt and just to make sure everything is okay in that household.
Okay, thank you. No, my mind is twirling, but I won't make suggestions on how to maybe recoup some of the funds, but yeah, we'll do that somewhere else. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else before we call the question? Mr. Williston? You good? Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Williston, I believe, Mr. Panos, you seconded?
Uh huh.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
No.
Motion passes seven, one, zero. Okay, moving to committee reports, long-range planning committee report. Ms. Soder.
So the committee report is that we're still pending a date to meet with the town council. And again, the approach is going to be to present this as a two-phase plan. Phase one, the absolutely necessary assessments that should be done for our elementary schools and then phase two, pending the results of those three assessments. But I know Robin's been working on getting us on the agenda, so hopefully more to update next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Soder. Any questions for the long-range planning committee? Okay. Other matters and announcements, regular, the next BOE regular meeting is Tuesday, December 16th. That's crazy. Public forum on the budget process at 6:30 and the regular meeting at 7:00 P.M. right here in the LPW boardroom. Before we go to audience to visitors, any announcements from any board members? I'll go to my left, okay, and to my right.
Okay. Can I just, I forgot to share that Saturday at 12:30 before the Bloomfield game, our seniors are going to be recognized, so just for the public, when the game starts at 1:30.
Thank you, Dr. Haiti. Um, Ms. Jacobson, any announcements?
I had the pleasure of attending the high school's play called Not Another High School Play this past weekend. I will say that it was cute. I loved, I attended both nights because my son was in the play. I enjoyed it very much. I find it really disappointing that it doesn't get more attention and the auditorium is filled maybe a third both nights. I would, I will be advocating for there to be some sort of a budget for the high school play, any budget, because currently there's zero. So that's, that'll be my little passion piece.
Okay.
But I thought it was great.
Awesome. Awesome. Nobody here? Mr. Williston?
I just want to say, my baby girl Maya came to her first board meeting today and I was very happy to have her today.
She did.
I almost gave her the mic.
So cute. Nobody on this side? Ms. Soder?
Yeah, I did attend a family engagement night for the sixth grade families at Sage Park. Really fantastic event. Highly encouraged the parents to get out during the family engagement nights. You get a chance to meet with the teachers and do some fun activities and I got dye all over myself because I apparently don't know how to properly put dye from a pipe bat into a beaker, so. Need to revisit science class.
There's that. Nobody here. Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, first off, thank you for reappointment to the K, to Crick. I'm council chair there, so thank you very much for that. This, this.
What would happen if I didn't?
Well, I'm, well, if you had not seen that I'm duly elected on the board, I would still be eligible, but you know, you just submitted, so thank you very much. This, this coming Friday around about eight o'clock, I will no longer be president of CAE, but it's been a great two-year ride and it's not goodbye, but see you later to CAE. I'll be back in the saddle at some point soon. But I want to highlight that, again, Windsor has always been on display with CAE as far as recognizing us as boards of distinction, recognizing the work that we do. They've encouraged us to bring the bus down, the mobile classroom down and to allow the whole state to see what we're doing here in Windsor. So to have that type of free publicity is amazing, so. And on top of that, we are presenting again as a school district office. Dr. Haiti as well as Leanna Jurgerson will be presenting on Friday from 4:15 to 5:30, so I'm going to encourage the whole board to make sure that we sit in on that session. I have the honor of moderating that session. That will be my, one of my last official acts as president, so I'm looking forward to hearing your presentation. And it's about the central office blueprint for coherence, vision and results. So she's going to be on, Dr. Haiti's going to tell the good things that we're doing here and how we're doing great things and really laying out a blueprint on how to move your district forth. So I encourage those that are attending to participate in that session. Thank you.
Awesome. I too, for the third year, I'm going to be in a, on a session too. I don't even know what time, but I'll let y'all know. That's a lot of fun. See you all at CAE. So in the interest of time, let's go on ahead and move to audience to visitors. Robin Daly.
Good evening, this is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within Zoom. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments will be made by the board at this time. There are currently attendees on the Zoom call, but there are no hands raised and there are no comments in the Q and A.
Anybody in the boardroom that wishes to speak?
Luckily, if you wait this late, you don't have an audience.
Okay.
Or not a large one. And I promise to keep to three minutes. So.
Your name, sorry.
Wait, what's it? Peter Hale, Windsor here. I've been a resident for about 16, 17 years now. Both my children attend Windsor Public Schools. My son's in the jazz band. Just a few things. One, I mean, you know, these kids, as you know, are very dedicated, obviously, like really very moving. And they spend a lot of years, right? So it's not just four years. You show up as a freshman, never playing an instrument before, you're not where the band is, right? They've played, a lot of them, they've started in strings in second or first grade, right? Then maybe they transitioned to band, you know, at OE or Paquonic, right? And so they've got maybe, as a freshman, they maybe have four to six years of an instrument already. And then they're going to dedicate to another four years. I think it's kind of unfair to say that that's like taking Algebra I for four years in a row. So not really the same thing, right? There, this is a journey through learning and an art and also mentoring the younger students. And that interaction builds community that's like, you know, invaluable and really speaks to the mission and the goals that are on the poster outside this room. And so I think it's really, really, we hold the board responsible to what's the strategy for the school? What rules do you make and what bounds do you set to help the school achieve what we want it to be? The presentation at the beginning of this saying, where is Windsor? Right, in Connecticut. Where is Windsor in Connecticut? What does the band do to help? What does the band do for each class when we say there's a gap and a gap between different students with different abilities and that we want to close that? What does the band do for that? How do you incentivize kids to be part of that, to be a successful community? So please consider that as you come up with solutions that may be, you know, paying lip service to a number of credits, but do they get credit for the work they're doing? Secondly, it's, it's unfortunate that we're talking about task force now, you know, basically after, you know, approval of a program of studies rather than before. Third, you know, waiting, we talk about waiting, there's a lot of talk about credits. Waiting's about credits, score and type of course, college honors, high honors. So the difference between AP Bio and guitar, AP Bio has a lab class, AP Bio is a high honors versus a college. They're different, right? They're mathematically different, so apply an objective criteria and evaluate that. And Ms. Davis, I totally agree. Clarity and transparency with the students is of paramount importance.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. It's cute.
I would need to move to close. Or are you, is it closed?
Yeah. Is it, anyone else?
There's, again, still people, there are still attendees, but again, no hands raised.
And there were no hands raised when you went to him.
Okay.
That's why I assumed it was closed.
Okay, okay. You'd have this decision to close audience to visitors. Okay.
Right, I move to extend the meeting to 11:15.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the meeting again to, this time to 11:15. Second, first by, motion made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any abstention, any opposition, abstentions, motion carries eight zero zero.
Adam President.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart.
Move the board into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining agreements for the nurses and school administrators and supervisors, inviting acting superintendent Dr. Noah Haiti, Val Haiti and chief of operations Daniel Bachelder. Action is anticipated in open session.
Second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? We are in executive session, eight zero zero at 10:44.
Are we, we're not going anywhere? What are we doing?
This is all live.
I'm having a pause. I'm pausing for you guys.
Pause in forty seconds.